Good evening, the Planning Board meeting will be called to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Davis is absent, Commissioner Luande is absent, Vice Chairman Vermont is absent. Commissioner Becker?
Present.
Commissioner Malloy?
Here.
Commissioner Perez?
Here.
Commissioner Quintora?
Here.
Secretary Marcela is here. Chairman Gallagher?
Here. All rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice alone.
This regular meeting of the City of Bayonne Planning Board has complied with the Open Public Meetings Act sunshine law. Annual notices of the schedule of regular meetings were mailed and faxed to both the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger newspapers within ten days of the reorganization meeting held on December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen. The schedule of regular meetings for calendar year two thousand seventeen is filed with the City Clerk's office and has been posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of the municipal building. A copy of the agenda of tonight's meeting was faxed and or mailed to Jersey Journal and Star Ledger at least forty-eight hours prior to this meeting and is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of the municipal building. Secretary Marcela, next on the agenda?
Is the adoption of the minutes for the prior meeting?
This is, there were no minutes for this meeting, this is a special meeting.
Right.
It'll be at the next meeting.
So Communications, which is the Municipal Council Resolution Designating Property Located at sixteen, eighteen, and twenty Bayview Court in Block three thirty point zero one lots one and two as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment and authorizing the Planning Board to prepare an amendment to the redevelopment plan pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Okay, Board Council, Capocenno, do we need a vote on this or just a simple accepting their resolution?
Just a simple acceptance.
Okay, the Board accepts the resolution to prepare an amended redevelopment plan. We don't need a vote on that, is that correct?
Not until we actually have the plan in front of us.
Yes, and just for information, that'll be ready for the February regular Planning Board meeting?
Thank you. Next on the agenda?
Is an informal update of the master plan and creation of the Master Plan Subcommittee.
And presenting from DMR?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you very much for having me here this evening. I am here to give you an update on the master plan that was started in two thousand and sixteen as well as talk about the next steps. So as you know, the last year we had several public workshops on March first, second, and third in different areas of the city. We had a substantial turnout at each one of those public meetings and then subsequent to that, and based on the, those meetings, we had a May twelfth Subcommittee meeting, we actually had two in one night, where there were twenty-five specific individuals that had an interest in talking in greater detail about the potential master plan. We met here, spoke with them at that point, and then over the course of the next several months, we worked on the draft reexamination study, worked with staff back and forth on several sections of the document. And this evening that we're here to do is talk about requesting if the Planning Board would have three to five members who would be interested in a steering committee meeting, meetings, where they would review the document and then we would, we would sit down and talk about any particular items or issues or omissions that you feel the current draft has. We would then revise those and edit them so that it would then be available to the public. So the goal here tonight is to see if the Board would have a few members that would be interested in reviewing the document to make sure that it's holistically meets the goals and objectives of the city. And then we would meet with you separately, probably in the evening, talk about any issues that the Board has with the document, revise those, and then it would become a public document for members of the public to be able to review and comment on. And as far as that, that next step would be, we would then, within our scope, revise those, make those revisions, we would have a public workshop that would likely be here, it would be another vision session where we would invite all the members of the public to come out and review the document. Usually what we do is we put the document online several weeks before that public workshop so that the public has an opportunity to read it, review it, have comments on it. We would then have that one night where we would go through the issues that the public would have in the document, we'd then make revisions over the next couple of weeks, and at that point we would have what we call a final draft. The final draft would then be presented to both the Planning Board and to the Mayor and Council for review and final comment, and then it would ultimately be adopted by the Planning Board. We think that that process from today moving forward is going to take anywhere between two to four months depending on, on the timing and the amount of comments we get back from the public. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions in terms of the process we've gone through and the process that we're proposing to move forward with, to finalize and finish the document.
Yeah, just go briefly over the process of what you would expect from the members of the Planning Board during a review.
Yes, so as I mentioned, we had several public workshops, we also did a survey online with, with, I think it was over fifty questions, there were eight hundred respondents, we took all of the information that was provided back from the public and used that as our basis for the document. What we would like to ask the members of the Planning Board to consider is, is to take the document in its draft form and review it. Within that document, there are a number of significant recommendations that we, that we're making, which would be really a vision for the City of Bayonne over the next ten to fifteen years. A reexamination report does not actually put anything in place, it simply sets goals and objectives and a vision for your future. We want to make sure that, and those are things like parking and land use, housing, transportation, and traffic. So we've made recommendations, we think that it would be important for the Board to be able to review that before it's made public, and then we would take comments back from the Board, we'd have, like I said, either one or two meetings with the Board, with the members of the steering committee from the Board, and we'd then take a couple of weeks to make revisions, and then it would become a draft document which could be placed online and, and the public would then have an opportunity to review it, and then we would have a public meeting where the public could come and basically provide comment, additional comments. We would then take two more weeks or three more weeks and then we would make a final draft and present that final draft to the entire Board for its review. So it is a little bit of time that we're asking, the document's several hundred pages, but the way it's written, it is, we're following the requirements of a reexamination report that is dictated by the state. There is one particular section of a five-section document that really talks about the recommendations, the vision for, for the city, and so it would be, it would be really going through Section Four of the document in great detail to make sure that the goals and objectives that we have placed into the document meet the goals and objectives of the Planning Board and of, and of the city. And so that's kind of the process we'd be asking the Board to consider tonight.
In going through the draft copy, and I guess this is the draft that you gave to us earlier. Was any consideration given to the previous Mr. Plan that would still have goals and objectives that would carry over into this plan?
Yes, so the reexamination study and its legal requirements by the state of New Jersey actually, you have to actually start with the last either master plan and/or reexamination study that was done, and so that is really the starting point by which we created this document. And, and you go through a series of five different sections and it basically asks you what were the goals and objectives of the previous master plan, what are the issues that are, that have been, that have been fixed or worked on, and what other objectives have not been fixed or worked on. And so the document really is based in history of Bayonne, so it's based in the master plan and the reexamination reports going up to here, and, and what we do is we start by pulling out the specific goals and objectives of those previous documents, and that's how we start the, the writing the plan itself. And that's, again, a requirement by the state, it's very kind of raw information, you have to follow this, this layout and this, this kind of format. And then, and then the section that really is the important section talks about, which is Section Four, talks about what recommendations you make on behalf of the city for land use, for transportation, for traffic, for parking. And so those are the, that's really the part of the document that is no longer about the history but more about where the City of Bayonne and its residents feel they want to move towards over the next, you know, ten to fifteen years. Once this document is approved, no zoning has been changed, nobody can go out and, and start to do anything, all it does is set up a guideline by which the Planning Board and the Mayor and Council can then start to implement changes, and those changes might be land use changes, or they could be parking changes, they could be transit or transportation. So, so there's a, this is really a high-level vision which allows the municipality legally to then move forward and make the proper changes to either zoning or land use or housing in the future.
Yeah, the reason I bring that up, as you're well aware, the previous plan did have significant plans for the Military Ocean Terminal. That has since changed dramatically over a period of years, and I guess Ms. Mack could, could comment on that if she wishes to, and I just wanted to make sure from a historical perspective that that was a significant change that would be included in the new master plan.
Yes, yes.
Chairman, if I may, and not, not so much to that but to that, DMR is doing an excellent job in my opinion, but just to help you as you go through the hundred seventy-six pages to give you a start, when we got it, we had plans for, in, you know, two thousand, and so it was my responsibility basically to go through the different departments and ask them, well, historic preservation, there was a recommendation to do some stuff for historic preservation, so I went to Joe Ryan and we discussed some of the things that would still carry over and some of the things were completed. COLA, affordable housing, things have changed, so you'll see different languages on the Military Ocean Terminal and on Texaco, those areas were basically a little bit left open so that the Planning Board could actually help craft the language for them, so I think that's what Mr. Ryan is asking, to get the Planning Board involved before they, before they issue the report because there's a lot of stuff going on there that really takes some interaction with the Board to say how we're going to present that.
Yeah, and that, that was my point, that there was an awful lot of things that were taking place, and I just wanted to make sure that we had a continuity of effort so people understood where the forks in the road, so to speak, took place over the last ten, fifteen years to where we are now, and reflected that type of, of.
And as I said, because I've seen the document probably more than other staff, but there were a few sections that we're waiting to talk to the Planning Board about before we finalize them, but for the most part, it's very up-to-date and as, the most important thing that Mr. Ryan has said is, if you adopt it, then the zoning limits has to be, has to be updated, so it'll be another, it'll be a while before this becomes the actual zoning, but this is a very important effort and in my opinion, they've done an excellent job.
Very good. Well, as of now, I can give, if you would like now, and I could present it to you later, I will be a member of that committee, Commissioner Becker will be a member of the committee, Laura Marcela, and Terrence Malloy, so we have four, we still have one more perhaps that we would add to it, but you could take those names now that will be actively involved in it.
Great, and what I'll do is I'll, I'll follow up with Lily in regards to timing and schedule, when we can come in and, after you've had a chance to review the document, to sit down, and we'll take as much time and as, and as many meetings as it takes to make sure that we have the document set.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Commissioner Luande has appeared.
Good evening. Next on the agenda?
Next on the agenda is public hearing P dash one six dash oh four six Parkview Realty Holdings. The site is one oh one to one oh five East Twenty-third Street, one oh two to one oh six East Twenty-fourth Street, one sixty-two to one seventy Avenue F in City Block four forty-five lots one, five, and seven. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a mixed-use building containing three thousand square feet of commercial space and a hundred and eighty residential units. Michael Mucelli is the squier attorney for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mucelli.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, or professionals. My name is Michael Mucelli, I represent Parkview Realty Holdings LLC in connection with this application for property located on Avenue F between Twenty-third and Twenty-fourth Street designated as Block four, four, five, lots one through five and seven. The applicant has been designated a redeveloper of this site, and it is zoned under a redevelopment plan that permits mixed uses, and that is multifamily residential building and commercial slash active uses. Tonight we seek preliminary and final major site plan to construct a mixed-use building that will house a hundred and eighty residential units and a three thousand square feet of commercial slash active use space, who will have a hundred and eighty-nine parking spaces. The building will also have amenities. It's important to note before we proceed that this application fully complies with the requirements of the redevelopment plan, from the use standards to the bulk standards to the design standards. So what is concentrated under that redevelopment plan is what's before you this evening. We have three witnesses planned this evening, our first one would be Bruce Stevie from Marchetto Higgins, and Stevie, he's our architect.
Okay, before we proceed, Mr. Mucelli, I noticed there is a rather large crowd here tonight, and I just wanted to take a second to just go over the process that takes place at the Planning Board. Mr. Mucelli is representing the applicant, and as part of the representation of the applicant, he will be bringing along various expert witnesses to testify about their area of expertise. As they come up, the audience as well as the commissioners first will be able to question any of the witnesses that Mr. Mucelli brings up, and then our expert witnesses on our side of the aisle here will also have an opportunity to question the witnesses about their testimony. Then I will open it up to questions that the audience can bring of the expert witnesses as they come forward. As Mr. Mucelli mentioned, there will be three expert witnesses, I guess you will have an architect, you will have a planner, and you will probably have a traffic engineer?
We will have an engineer, a site engineer, and then a traffic engineer. We have a planner here, but because there are no variances.
Okay.
He really will be.
Right. And just to let the audience know, at the conclusion of any questions about the various experts that are brought up here, at the end of the presentation, Mr. Mucelli will conclude his application, and then we will accept any comments from the commissioners, and I will open it up to the audience for any comments that they wish to make, pro or con regarding this application. So the beginning will be questions related to the expert testimony of the witnesses, and at the end, you will be able to make a comment about the project. Thank you, Mr. Mucelli, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, at this time I would like to move all of our exhibits into evidence, they are marked A one through A thirty.
So moved.
Thank you. Yep.
Mr. Stevie, can you present your qualifications to the Board?
Sure, my name is Bruce Stevie, I'm an architect with Marchetto Higgins Stevie Architects, I'm actually a principal in the firm. I have a master's degree in architecture from the Savannah College of Art and Design School of Building Arts, as well as a bachelor's degree in architecture. I've worked with the firm of Dean Marchetto for twenty-six years, I am licensed to practice architecture in the state of New Jersey.
Mr. Stevie has appeared before this Board recently, and we accept him as an expert witness.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Stevie, can you orient the Board and the public to the location of this site, please?
Sure, I'm going to start this evening, we have a brief PowerPoint presentation that goes through the location process, and then I will take a brief break from that and take you to a three-dimensional model that we have constructed in the computer, we'll take a quick fly-around of the site there, and then come back to the PowerPoint presentation. One second. So, um, yes, can you take it out? Okay. Great. So, um, the site is located on Avenue F between Twenty-third and Twenty-fourth Streets, and it is bounded to the east by a, a commercial facility and the tank storage facility that you see, and then further east by the retail along four forty. Here, the site is outlined in red, it's got extensive frontage on Twenty-third Street, frontage on Twenty-fourth Street, and then a small amount of frontage on Avenue F. This is an overhead shot of the site, and you can see the site is currently occupied by a marine vehicle storage facility and, and a few other vehicles. There are a few small vacant structures on the site, as well as a, a shop at the front on Avenue F. Again, the red outline shows the perimeter of the site. These are some Google Earth images of the context photos, this is looking down Avenue F at the site, there's a existing residence on the corner of, of Twenty-fourth and Avenue F, that is also a, currently approved for development through the zoning process. Then at the center of the block, you see the, the warehouse building and, and the vacant lot area, that is the frontage that is part of this parcel, and then there is a development This is looking north, so you see again the development project to the south, the warehouse building, and the, the residential structure to the north. Again, here we're looking down Twenty-third Street to one of the vacant buildings on the property, and again, the, the open area to the east, that is part of the parcel. This is looking back towards Avenue F from the eastern portion of Twenty-third Street, again, you can see the, the vacant residential buildings and the marine storage. This is a view down Twenty-fourth Street, looking east, so again, we're looking at the residential building that's approved for future development as well as the vacant portion of our site to the south, and this is standing at the eastern edge of Twenty-fourth Street looking back. Some of the development trends in this area, this area is, is an exciting area for development, it's near the light rail station, so it's, it's within walking distance of the light rail station, and, and looking at some of the development trends that are happening in that area, this is one of, I think, one of the very nice projects that was completed recently, Silk Lofts, it's a residential conversion of a factory building, it's, it's, it's been very well received, and as an architect, I can appreciate the efforts that the developer went to, to convert this structure into a residential building. There was also new development that's been approved, this is a project that was approved at Avenue E, right by the light rail station, and again, this project was designed to have a loft characteristic to it, so it's starting to generate a new look for this neighborhood. I'm going to take you now to our three-dimensional model. So, oftentimes when we begin design of projects like this, we'll construct a three-dimensional model, we'll build some of the context of the neighborhood, and, and it helps us identify important locations, and it also helps us visualize the design of the project. So, interesting things, we have the light rail station at Avenue E and twenty, I think it's Twenty-second Street, the Silk Lofts project is down here, the project that I just showed you is on Avenue E, is, is located right here, and then the proposed project is located in this location. So we've got light industrial commercial areas against four forty, and we're within a very short walking distance to the light rail station. So this, this area is, is particularly well-suited to development of this type, bringing density to the light rail stations. As we come in closer, again, I think the important thing to note here is that we've got a development within a close proximity to the light rail station. Another interesting thing is that we have frontage on three streets, and the character of each of those streets is quite different. One of the things that we saw as an opportunity was to address each street frontage individually, and one of the interesting things that we also noted was that Avenue F is a primary roadway, really deserved some attention as to what, what the functions and uses on that street were going to be, and then were there opportunities for us to, to use that to shape As we swing around, there were a few interesting points, one was that we, we looked at the projects and the loft-type projects that were being developed in other areas of the neighborhood, and we used that as an influence on the design of the building. We also looked at the projects that had been approved on the adjacent sites, and what their impact was on this development, and then we also, again, were looking at how we could address the frontage on Avenue F. So when we came to the Avenue F facade, it was, it was interesting for us that the project to the north of us, which has previously been approved, was a residential building of a certain scale and character, the project to the south, which has been a project that has stalled, but we hope would be restarted after the energy that this project brings, and the ability to actually create a sort of retail node on this block because of its close proximity to the light rail station. And so we were proposing a building of slightly different character on Avenue F, a building that would have a retail presence, and then also an open space, a mid-block open space that could be utilized by the retail, and also that would lead to the entry to the residential building. And. building. And so, what it would do is take the height of the residential building and lower it as it approached Avenue F. So, coming in, this is a view looking into the plaza space. The residential entrance is at the back of the plaza. There is a retail component that faces the plaza that would energize and activate the plaza space. We could really envision a cafe or some form of retail like that that could utilize the plaza space. And then we would have an amenity space above that that would be utilized by the residents of the building. So, again, it creates a nice formal entry court to the project. Coming back around to the 23rd Street facade, we have a residential entry lobby at this location as well as a garage entrance to the building on this location. Another thing that was done, looking at the factory buildings and the loft conversions and that style of architecture, we incorporated that into the facade of the building and used that to break the facade into scalable pieces going down the block. We also used varying heights in the building, all within the permitted building height, but we used step backs and setbacks on the upper floors to give the building the appearance of a variety of heights. Coming down, again, to street level, all the facades of the building have been treated so that they are, they appear to be, there's parking level that actually occupies the first floor of this building, but it's been treated in such a way that it's so, it blends with the rest of the building and it doesn't feel out of character with the rest of the building. It'll have windows that will have a tinting to them so that the parking is obscured from the street front. Coming around, this is a view looking west on 23rd Street. Again, you can see the character of the building. You can see the steps in the cornice line of the building to give it a variety at the Coming around on the roof, there are rooftop amenity spaces that have been utilized by residents of the building. Those are located on the eastern side of the building to take advantages of views of the Hudson River and the New York City skyline. Coming around to the 24th Street side, again, you can see we've continued the modulation of the building. We've continued the loft aesthetics and used similar setbacks at the top of the building. Again, the parking levels of the building are treated the same way as the residential levels of the building, so parking is screened appropriately and the street's gap has new sidewalks and street trees. And then as we come around, you can see again how we've tried to fit in with the architectural style of the building that was previously approved and will hopefully be built at the corner so that the design of our building is compatible with that. However, you know, again, the goal of our project was to be a compliant project with redevelopment plan. And then coming back into the plaza space at the front.
Mr. Stevie, can you just describe through the proposed building design?
Sure. I'm going to quickly go through a couple of the floor plans. And this is the ground-level floor plan. So, again, the project has 180 residential units. I'll discuss that more on my next slide. And with 189 parking spaces internal to the building. The retail component is 3,000 square feet and that fronts on Avenue F and the plaza space. The plaza also links back to the residential entry lobby, which also leads to 23rd Street and back to the core of the building. Parking garage entrance access is off 23rd Street and then inside is a series of parking spaces. We are utilizing some automated stackers and they will be on a limited basis. However, we've used these stacker systems in the past. That's a great way of maximizing parking spaces. The parking stackers are basically a mechanical unit that's operated by the tenants of the building. It's fully automated and the system works in such a way that cars are lifted above one another and there's always a space empty at the bottom. And the bottom spaces move right to left and they can move independently so that if this car needed to get out, these spaces, these units would move to the right and then that space would lower. This is a photograph of the interior of one of those automated parking facilities. There are gates that close off the lower levels. When the person drives in, they arrive, they either have a reader on their keys or a tag or they come in and they punch in a code. This gate would open up and allow you to pull in and then the parking system would park your car either up or to the side. And this is the system as the car is pulling in. I have a quick video if you'd like to see that of how that works. Let's escape out of this first. This is a very quick. So, you can see that this car is pulled into the parking structure. The lift system lifts that car up so that it's out of the way and then the space that's left underneath will become the shuffle space for the cars below. You can see the person who just parked their car is now walking away and the gate at the back is closed. So, then assuming a car over here might need to get out, this whole system shuttles over and then that space can drop down. This is, again, new technology, but it's allowing for greater parking in parking garages. So, you can see that the lift drops down and then you'll be able to drive onto that So, now we're coming up to the second level of the residential building. There are 180 residential units. The mix is 10 studio units, 63 two-bedroom units, 17 loft-style units, five three-bedroom units, and then 85 one-bedroom units. On the second level, we have our lobby space, but then we also have the outdoor common areas that are accessed by the building occupants. And then we also have the amenity space that also fronts out onto Avenue F and that amenity space will contain gyms, fitness centers, and lounge areas. That amenity space is actually two floors. Now, we're on the third floor and we have our sort of typical unit configurations. We have a one-bedroom unit, a one-bedroom den unit, and a two-bedroom unit. One of the comments that was also provided in one of our review letters was that we need to open up the dens, so we're going to provide a arched opening into that space. There will be no doors on the dens so that it's not considered a bedroom space. On the top floor, we actually have created some duplex units and those basically become units that have an area that's open to below, again, a loft-like space with a staircase that goes up and then there's an opportunity to provide a living space up on the roof area that can then open up to outdoor spaces, again, utilizing the roof. In urban areas, it's good to have as much open space and outdoor space as possible for the enjoyment of the tenants and the residents. So, we see this as another opportunity to do that within the permitted redevelopment building heights. This is an elevation drawing, basically a hard-line drawing of what you saw in the model. It describes how the building is compliant with all the redevelopment requirements, specifically building heights. And the elevations were reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission and they actually came back with a good comments. They liked the way the building was modulated. They liked the colors and the changes in the colors of the brick of the building. This is a quick cross-section and this shows how those loft units work at the top of the building. There's certain spaces within the unit that are double-height spaces and then there's a connection stair that goes up and then there's an accessible living space that opens up onto the roof, again, creating a unique unit but also creating an opportunity for outdoor space for that unit. These are just some interior renderings of what the interiors of the building might look like. Kitchen spaces, fitness centers, part of the amenity, and then a quick rendering of the entry portion. This is the retail component and amenity space and then this is the proposed development adjacent to our property and then the residential lobby at the back of the plaza space. We do have some experience designing loft buildings and we think that loft buildings are an exciting aesthetic. This is a project that we did in Jersey City that was actually a conversion of a factory building into a residential building. So, again, you can see that the large gridded windows, the brick piers, the arches at the top of the building, all are hallmarks of loft buildings. This is a new constructed building. This is a rendering of it, but this is a project in Morristown, New Jersey, again, where we use an aesthetic that's similar. You've got the small gridded windows. You've got the detailed brickwork at the top of the building. So, again, I think it's a great urban style, an appropriate urban style of architecture.
Mr. Stevie, just going back to the parking area. There were questions about the security measures that we're going to put in the parking room. Are we going to put security cameras in?
Sure. Yes. A security system is being proposed for the entire building and the parking would have that.
And the number of parking spaces that we're providing, that complies with the redevelopment plan requirements as well, correct?
Yes, it does.
We'll also provide a lighting plan for that parking area?
Yes, we can provide a lighting plan.
Can you also just discuss the removal of trash?
Sure. Well, trash is going to be, I'm going to go back to an earlier slide if I can. So, there's a trash room that's located near the core of the building on each floor. So, there'll be a room on each floor and there'll be a chute in the room. That chute will come down to a compactor located in the garage where there's a room that's sized large enough to handle the recycling as well as the trash collection for this building. So, all of the trash will be stored inside the building. The developer is proposing to do private hauling for this project. Private hauling typically would come in with a smaller truck that could access into the garage. They would pull in, load up the truck, and then come back out. So, that's the way that we anticipate trash collection happening. One other thing that I didn't speak of earlier is part of the redevelopment plan requirements is that we provide bike storage. We have a bike storage room for, I believe, it's 92 bicycle parking spaces. Again, it complies with the requirements of the redevelopment plan to provide secure storage for residents' bikes.
And that number complies with the redevelopment plan requirements as well, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, that would be all I have for Mr. Stevie. If the board has any questions or the public, please?
Mr. Stevie, on the renderings you had, I noticed the courtyard that's below. What is going to be in the courtyard? Is that open to all of the residents and the availability to get in here is strictly for the residents? Is that correct?
That's correct. It's, all of the access to that is internal to the building. So, but it will be open to the residents of the building so that it can be utilized by them.
Utilized by what? Is there going to be any type of amenities in there?
At this point, there's probably, there's going to be passive amenities on the courtyard levels and then active amenities on the upper level. And then there's actually, I'm going to go, if I may, to courtyard plan. So, this front courtyard is actually adjacent to the amenity, the enclosed amenity spaces. So, that may be a more active. The amenities are not public. They're for the building as well. There's a lower courtyard in the front, the plaza.
Okay, right.
That's the public. So, that's on the ground level, but this is on the second level up. So, this will be an active courtyard area. It may contain a fire pit. It may contain, you know, those types of uses. And then in the interior courtyard, where sound, you know, may be a little bit, it'll be a more passive use. And then the more recreation area would happen up on the roof, the top roof level of the building.
The garage, you had 189 spaces. Roughly, how many handicap spaces are there?
Yeah, I can.
There are six.
I thought I saw six. I wasn't sure.
Yeah. I'll go back to that plan very quickly and you can see. The handicap spaces are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, right. And they're centralized to the lobby entrance?
Yes.
I'm sorry. There are six handicap spaces and they're centrally located adjacent to the elevators and the building lobby itself so that you can get directly into the building.
The other question I had is the windows, and I noticed in some of the other examples you showed a building from Jersey City and I think another city. How are the window treatments handled? Is that under the complete control of the owner or is it each individual occupant?
You mean interior window treatment?
Yes.
That's an interesting question. That hasn't been addressed.
Well, the reason I ask that is you see some buildings that it looks like a nice, standardized, controlled environment. And then I've seen buildings that it looks like, I don't know, a free-for-all, so to speak.
Right. I believe that, you know, we could control that through whatever controls that the management can put on that, but I think that's a really good point that it should be.
It's a beautiful building and I was just wondering how you control it.
Right, it should be controlled.
Yep, okay. Good work. Good work.
Absolutely. The other question I had, and maybe it's not you, but it's going on property and I don't know what light manufacturing will be close by, but obviously there were oil tanks in the close proximity of the property. Was there any need for remediation or testing to the level of satisfactory EPA standards?
Our engineer will address that. There has been testing here and as part of the construction, I think we'll be conducting remedial activities, but I will let him address that.
Right. I have no further questions. Any of the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Luande.
Quick question on the stackers. So, there's nine stackers, correct?
That's correct.
They're gated? There's a gate?
There is a safety system that closes in front of them, yes.
So, there's no way to block the cars on top, right?
That's correct.
And where are the nine retail parkings?
We haven't indicated them on the drawing yet, but as part of, we would anticipate that, you know, there would be some parking spaces here and some parking spaces here that would be designated for retail use. And those might be signed because retail happens during a certain period of the day and, you know, so that night maybe they can be used sort of. and, you know, so that night maybe they can be used sort of as shared parking spaces for residents and then, you know, they have to be vacated from 9 till 10 or whatever the hours that we could come up with would be, that could be agreed upon.
This is gated, right, the parking?
The parking, the parking will have a garage door on it, yes.
So how do, how does the retail?
We may be able to provide a form of a reader or something like that that could be issued. There may be an access code. That would be something that we would need to work out is how we would access the retail. Would it be parking for employees? Would it be parking for retail tenants? I'm not sure. We could, we could work that out.
Yeah, we'll look at that as a condition of approval. For practical purposes, we will allow access, obviously, to anyone who's coming to the site.
One possibility would be that we provide gates inside the building.
You have to talk to the microphone, please, Mr. Stevie.
I apologize. One thing we could do is possibly provide gates inside the building that would section off the retail access points and then the garage door could be left open for, you know, the hours of operation. And then there would be gates or garage doors that would close off those areas. So there's, there's solutions that we could use for that.
I just think there would have to be like an easy access for them to mitigate them from using like, you know, street parking.
I think I agree. So we'll come up with a good solution for that.
Yeah, I think retailers, any retailer would want that anyway. They want spaces, retailers, that's important to most retailers. Not much for this size, but I think that's going to be as important to the tenant as it is to us.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Mr. Russo, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just one, a question on the stackers. I know you provided parking per the redevelopment plan, but the need arisen in the future, is there a way to add additional stackers?
I think that's one of the very, you know, interesting things about this system is it is expandable. So all it would need to do is, right now we're showing those stackers located here, we could expand them up and they just have to be located against a wall. So we could increase that number to, you know, whatever's necessary in the future if it's required. Thank you.
Mr. Clarkin?
Yes, just a couple of questions. Do you know what the total square footage of open space is when you count all the private and the public amenities?
We, I do, our engineer can testify to that as well.
I can wait for the engineer.
Yeah, because most of it I think is exterior and not interior, not actually part of the building. So we'll have our engineer testify to that.
Great. And all the private amenities, including the rooftops, they'll have landscaping and railings and all that stuff?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And finally, can you just go over any proposed signs, especially any within the windows for the retail area?
At this time, there's no signs proposed for the project. Any signage that would be installed by a tenant would need to comply with the redevelopment plan. Any sign requirements?
Another question I had, I don't know if you saw the comments from the fire subcode official that had some comments on it. Could you address the comments from that?
Joe.
That was the rear exit?
Mr. Chairman, our engineer spoke to the fire subcode official. He can be, he's better suited to answer that question.
Okay. But I think in the end it's going to work out. You've got no problems with the?
Yes, I think based on our conversation with the fire official that we're going to work it all out, so.
Very good. Okay, if you could just free up this microphone, Mr. Maselli. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions regarding the architect? Please come forward.
Hi, Melanie Florrie, 108 East 25th Street. I would like to approach that, but first I have a couple of questions that I want to get clear in my mind. Am I correct in that this is going to be 180 units, non-residential? In other words, they're going to be renting from these units?
It is 180 residential units.
And for the 180 units in the building that is six stories high, you have allocated 189 parking places?
We have provided the required parking per the redevelopment plan.
I don't doubt that. I've read the redevelopment plan, it looks like everything is in order. My question to you is, there's 189 parking places, which you say 66 are compact. My question to you is, how do you determine that the 189-plus people that are going to live in the building have 50% compact cars? And if they don't fit on your lifts or whatever, where do they go? The normal SUVs, the four-wheel drives, the this and that?
Again, in my professional opinion, the compact spaces that we're providing are adequate for this.
They are adequate. I don't disagree with you. I'm saying in the real world, where people do not, they have four-wheel drives, SUVs, little pickup trucks, not everybody has like the little car that you showed over there on your diagram, okay? Now, I'm not trying to be cute, I'm trying to be realistic. And I give you the credit, you've gone according to the plan, okay? But you are talking a massive building and I would like to approach that if I may. May I?
Approach the building?
No, approach that, his diagram, okay? I would like to just point out a few things.
We can't hear you from here.
On the top here is 24th Street. On the bottom is 23rd Street.
Correct.
This building goes and is on a dead-end street. There is no access except to use one street or another depending on where they decide to put the openings. That's the first thing. This little thing over here is the 19 units that was approved by your board a couple of months ago. Let me see, 189 or 18, 19 unit. This little thing here is a four-story, unoccupied building. I cannot tell you why it's been making for maybe 15 years. My question to everybody and my comment, when this all opens up, should it? 18 units or 19, four-story building, 180. Residential property, 23rd Street. One and two family house, residential property, 24th. Oh, and did I forget, the other proposed project?
Ma'am, ma'am, do you have a question of the architect?
I have a point for the people who don't understand this. And I think I have the right to do that because this encompasses my neighborhood. 24th Street, there's another proposed project there. Right here on the street. We are talking dead-end streets. We are not talking, very nice picture you showed of silth loss on Avenue E. You go up and down Avenue E two ways. You don't have that here. This is all in one area.
Ma'am, do you have a question for the architect?
My question is, has any consideration been brought? Knowing what I just stated to you guys, you've got an 18 unit, you've got the proposed mosque and whatever on the other side, you have the building that hasn't been occupied and now it looks like we're going to have 180 more. Has anyone considered that? Yes, who agrees with Sue's plan? I like the plan.
Right. Ma'am, I don't mean to keep interrupting.
You can do that. Can you tell me?
Do you have a question of the architect about his?
Can you tell me?
There's an architect right there.
Can you tell me anywhere in the city of Bayonne, a building this size has ever been considered on a dead-end street?
I cannot tell you anywhere in Bayonne that this has happened.
If I'm going to get the testimony, I understand, but please, I can't hear when you guys are climbing, I'm sorry. I'll repeat it if you want. I'll keep his answer. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I know that we're proposing a project that complies with the redevelopment plan. It's a residential project, it's a residential use in a residential neighborhood, it's in close proximity to the Light Rail Station. I think, again, that it's an appropriate building for the site.
Okay, since you answered that, I'll answer you back. I know where there are many projects being proposed in that whole area, okay? None of them are on a dead-end street. Not one. If you'd like, I can go over the list of everything that is in that area.
Ma'am.
But I will do that later. I got you. Okay. You are part, you are architect, okay. Are you the person that I would talk to? Now, I guess that's the building person. By the way, who is the builder?
Parkview Realty Holdings.
No, who is the builder? Who is, who is going to be building that property?
I don't know that that's been determined yet.
Okay, okay. All righty. I'm not sure if you're the person I need to direct all these questions I have, so maybe you're lucky. All right, I'm going to just call that quits and let somebody else get up some air.
Good, thank you.
And I'm sure you appreciate it.
Yes. Next.
Hi, my name is Louis Florrie, R U I Z, I'm in 105 Avenue F. I just want to ask you, just by think, when I was writing down little notes, what happens in case of a blackout when you have the parking, the cars are in that electric system? It's just an elementary question that I never?
The systems have a manual override, they can be operated manually.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Rose Bond, 108 East 25th Street. B O N D. Can I just ask you, have you ever been down to that site to see?
Yes, I have.
You have? And you have no concerns or anything about two dead-end blocks?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Gary Lappalo, 102 West 46th Street. Am I going to have a traffic expert as well?
Yes.
Okay, then maybe I'll save my question for the traffic expert because I do have a concern about how long it's going to take, I don't know how many cars will have and rush out in the morning, but 100 or 125 cars to get out in the morning and what that'll do to the neighborhood. So I'll wait for the traffic expert, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Javis Lewski, 100 East 23rd Street. I'm sorry, what was your name?
Bruce Stevie.
Bruce. Next, you have a master's degree, right?
Yes.
Okay. So based on your experience in all of the, you know, if you've been to, how many times have you been down to 23rd Street and you said you've been there, how many times have you been there?
Quite a few times, I'd say four times.
Four times? And how long do you spend there each time you're there? I've never seen you there, I'm there every day.
I'd say an hour.
An hour? What'd you do there for the whole hour? It's a vacant lot.
We took photographs, we observed site conditions.
Okay, when you talk about the shared parking thing, it seems like people are, I know Mr. Lawande had brought it up already, about there's already concerns about parking when you talk about shared parking, where you have the retail and the residential, so when the retail time is open, they're going to allow retail to come in and then when they close, the residential's going to run out of their house and come running to take that spot. Is that kind of what the plan is?
No, no, the parking spaces are designated for retail, they're with retail-use parking spaces and then, you know, but it would be a shame for empty parking spaces to go unused at night.
Yeah, that is going to be a shame because there isn't going to be empty spots anymore. Based on what you're saying, you're talking about the 180 units, are you aware what Mrs. Florrie brought up as well with the building that's adjacent to your building, the six-story building of 20 units, you're aware of that?
Yes.
And the other building on 23rd Street. So we're talking 180 units on this proposed conglomerate. Then you have another six-story building with 20 apartments in it and then there's another building that's vacant, so we're talking in excess of over 200 units when it's all said and done. Now, based on your experience, Bruce, you see the neighborhood, it's kind of a blue-collar type of neighborhood, and so is Bayonne, and that's not meant to be derogatory, right? You're bringing in this luxury, high-rise building to jam into a community that's a quiet residential neighborhood. I mean, do you have any, do you have any concerns? You said you've been here four or five times. Do you have any concerns that when you come down and wow, you know, we're going to build this monstrosity, this 200, how many millions dollars are you spending?
I don't know the cost of the building.
Okay. Well, it's an excess, I think, of close to $50 million from what I believe. So you're going to build this monstrosity right dead smack in a quiet neighborhood. I happen to live on 23rd Street, I mentioned my address at the beginning here, I happen to live out on 23rd Street. This building is going to be where all the classes are.
Do you have a question for?
I'm just trying to convey my message that you realize that whenever it's residential, all the buildings on the east side, 23rd Street, 25th, the entire neighborhood is two and three-story buildings, the houses. And now you're going to come in and build a six-story, 180 unit. Do you think it fits and conforms to what the neighborhood is looking for?
Yes, and it's permitted by the redevelopment plan.
I understand it, but you keep saying you're conforming to the, you're conforming to what the redevelopment plan is, but I'm also looking at something here on the redevelopment plan that says here in 3.2, it says here, "We recommend the preservation of the existing residential neighborhood." Do you feel building a 180 unit plus the other 20 units and another 20, do you feel that that is going according to the master plan where they recommend the preservation of the existing residential neighborhood or is your building just going to be a complete ice hill and be brought out the neighborhood?
I don't believe it's going to be an ice hill, I think it's going to be an improvement over what is currently there.
But how could you not say it's going to be an ice hill? You have all two family houses and you're building a six-story monstrosity, it's going to be a complete ice hill.
Again, I don't agree with the term monstrosity either. I think it's going to be.
Any other questions? Anybody else have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mary Curtis, 73 East 26th Street. Is there any special reason why the building on 23rd Street, 102 F, wasn't included in this, that one square at the end corner, 23rd? The other one and that one was not included? You observed every other piece of property except that one on 23rd, 102 F. Do you know why?
Sure, Mr. Maselli, maybe you could shed light on that.
We, short, we don't own it and we did, we did try to buy that piece. We've owned this piece for years, but we don't own that lot on the corner. We would have loved to incorporate this into the development.
You would have.
But we reached out, we couldn't get in touch with the person who is listed as the owner.
Oh, all right.
So we wanted, we wanted that lot, but we just couldn't get it.
Do you know that that piece of property was actively contaminated?
I only know what's on our site. I don't know about that site and I know that site's engaged.
That site's connected to your site.
Well, we have, we've had our environmental experts, we have our engineer here, we'll talk about that.
Okay. All right, now you also mentioned the 1, 2, 3 bedroom apartments. I kind of broke it down a little bit. How many people actually sit in that building that is 1, 2, 3 and 3 bedroom apartments? How many people?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
You should know. You, you make 1, 2, 3, and there were lots, there were lots, too, there were lots, there was 1, 2 and 3 bedroom. How many people altogether are going to sit in that building?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, again, we have a planner who can, who can give you that statistic. He's not the right guy to answer my question, my answer. We have a planner here who has that kind of statistic. He's an architect, he worries about the building and the layout and, he is a planner who counts the numbers when it comes to impact, so he'll have that for us and we'll get the answer for you.
All right, so the people coming home from work, they're bringing the cars home from work, how long do you anticipate that they're going to have to wait for their cars to run on this little machine to go up and down and that they're not going to be backed up to a dead-end street? How long does it take for each little car to move over?
Well, you saw the video, it's pretty quick and the parking spaces that are utilizing the stacker spaces are at the back of the garage, so there's room for them to queue inside the garage.
If, if there's a bunch of cars coming home at 5 o'clock?
There's nine stacker spaces.
There's nine, nine stacker spaces, but how many entrances are there? One? One entrance?
There's one.
So they all have to go in the same entrance?
But that entrance moves depending on the location of the open space?
The cars are still going to back up. And you're also aware of our egress and ingress on our part of town, that there's only two bridges to get over and two underpasses. You're aware? You're aware of that?
Yep. We have a traffic in here.
But you're gonna add this amount of people down there on this side of town? That's all. Sorry.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Maselli, please proceed with your next witness.
My next witness, I'd like to call our engineer, Joe Spurran. Yeah?
Where'd you go?
Let's switch yets.
I'm gonna have this too, so.
Yeah, so, um...
Three one?
Put that over there. So we're gonna mark anything where this stall stop in the park?
I do. Joseph Spurran, S P A R O N E, with Dynamic Engineering, Chester, New Jersey.
Mr. Spurran, can you present your qualifications to the board?
Yes. I have a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I've been practicing the field of engineering on residential, commercial, industrial properties for about 15 years now. Licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey as well, other states around the vicinity, and have been qualified as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
Mr. Spurran, have you appeared before this board before?
Don't think so. I'm the engineer's rapport on several plans in the city.
We, we accept you as an expert witness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Proceed, Mr. Maselli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Spurran, can you describe the existing site conditions?
Yes. I'm gonna start with first... First exhibit is simply just a colorized version of Sheet 2. That's in the site plan package that was submitted. It's the area map. It is dated October 27, 2016. Existing conditions, as Mr. Stevie described in detail, you have East 24th Street to the north, you have East 23rd Street to the south. To the west, I'm gonna call it, you have Avenue F, or to the right of the page, to the right of the page, you have Route 440 beyond, and in between the property and Route 440, you have a tank storage area as well as a storage yard. The property itself is kind of a, it's a conglomerate of a couple different uses and properties. You have various existing dwellings, residential dwellings. Majority of the property itself is commercial in nature. You have a commercial garage located on the Avenue F frontage. To the rear of the property, I'll call it the east half of the property, the majority is a storage yard, which is a hodgepodge of uses. You got, you know, some boats and some other vehicles that are stored on the property, majority of it being covered with hard pack gravel.
We're talking about that eastbound side of the property. There was questions in the reports about the right of way for the railroad. That has been extinguished, is that correct?
It has been. Since the survey that was submitted along with the site plans, we've since updated that survey with a title search that was recently conducted. That reason it was extinguished. The release was filed October 26, 2006. It's Deep Book 8035, page 2240.
We can provide that to the board, correct?
We can. And we'll provide the updated survey as well.
Okay. Can you go take us now through the proposed conditions for the site?
Yes. This is a colorized version of the site plan that was submitted to the board. It's a site plan rendering dated December 20, 2016. It's based on the site plan dated October 27, 2016. What this is, is as I mentioned, it's just a colorized version of the site plan, and it actually includes the proposed landscaping as well, the kind of providing area view of the proposed development. The development itself will include a 63,570 square foot building. Within that building, you'll have 180 dwelling units plus 189 parking spaces. In addition to the dwelling units, you'll have 3,000 square foot of retail. The lot itself's approximately 1.78 acres in size, conforming with the minimum lot requirement of 75,000 square feet. Minimum lot frontage, the lot itself, which we took the lot as a whole, not on individual lots, so I'm looking at this as one piece of property when I'm going through. It's part of my testimony. Avenue F frontage is 79.34 feet. East 23rd Street is 305.02 feet, and East 24th Street is 169.96 feet, of which conform with the redevelopment ordinance requirements. Minimum lot width, 200 feet. Minimum lot depth, 410.9. Again, this conforms with the 75-foot lot width and 200-foot lot depth are requirements of the ordinance, of the redevelopment plan. Minimum building setbacks.
Mr. Spurran, could you do me a favor and turn that a little bit to the audience so that they can see it as well?
Yeah, and I'll move out of the way, too.
Thank you.
The minimum building setbacks, again, all of these are compliant with the redevelopment plan. You have front road setback and Avenue F, East 23rd Street, East 24th Street, the setback is at the property line. Again, this is per the redevelopment plan for the zero lot line setback. Rear yard, the plan requires a 20-foot average, 21.3 feet width be provided, which also includes in that rear yard some open space, which I'll get to in a minute. The side yard, that's a zero lot line setback, again, in accordance with the plan. And the side yard along on the south side of Avenue F, which would be the south side of the proposed plaza, there's a side yard requirement of 3 feet, and the actual side yard would be 32.2 feet in that area. Building height, there's various building height requirements as part of the redevelopment plan. There's actually three different ways to measure it. I'm gonna say three different ways. There's three different locations that it was required to be measured on. There was one on Avenue F where the height requirement was four stories, 50 feet. It would be at four stories, 45.8 feet. The other height requirements for 23rd and 24th Street, both areas were six stories, 70 feet. The proposed building would be five stories, 67 feet, again, within the plan requirements. Similar to the building height, the lot coverage requirements, there was kind of a twofold requirement. There was a ground level lot coverage requirement, which excluded the plazas and open spaces to the rear. The requirement was that you have a maximum of 90 percent, and proposed is 82.2 percent, so 66,983 square feet, again, where 90 percent was allowable. And then the maximum lot coverage of the upper levels was 75 percent, and the building as proposed would be 66.4 percent, or 51,400 square feet. Minimum floor area ratio, the redevelopment plan was, was a floor ratio of 3, and the current building's at 2.67. So, again, a lot of numbers, but in the end, the building does comply with all those bulk requirements. Moving on to access and parking. Currently, the lot itself, and when I say lot itself, again, all those lots clumped, you know, clumped together. There's currently five curb cuts. This project is gonna reduce those. There'll only be one curb cut. It'll be located on 23rd Street. The driveway and the curb cut associated with it is located closer to the Avenue F portion of the property, as I called. So it's on 23rd Street, but it's gonna be located on the north end of the, at, East 23rd Street frontage. So this is about as close as we could get to Avenue F. One benefit of the reduced curb cuts is you do gain some off-street parking. In addition to those curb cuts, East 23rd Street will be extended down the length of the existing right of way. So there will be some additional on-street parking gained associated with that. As far as interior to the building, the minimum space size for the building was eight-and-a-half feet by 18 feet for your typical parking space. And then the compact spaces will allow that 7 feet 4 inches wide and a 16-foot depth. What is proposed is actually a 9 by 18 space for, you know, the majority of the parking spaces, so slightly larger than that eight-and-a-half foot width requirement. And there would be 18 foot in length, and in the compact spaces, they will be compliant with the 7 foot 4 inches and 16 foot length. Minimum aisle width, minimum aisle width of 22 feet was allowed, 22 feet is proposed. And then as far as the number of spaces, the requirement for those spaces is one space per dwelling unit and three spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area for commercial space. As was mentioned, the parking requirement does comply, the proposed parking does comply with that. When you do the math with that requirement, 189 spaces are required, 189 spaces are proposed. And again, that includes nine spaces dedicated to the retail use, 180 dedicated to the residential uses. 35 percent of those were allowed to be compact. As I said, 66 of those, 189 spaces will be the compact spaces for a 34.9 percentage. Including that will be a 688 parking spaces as previously mentioned.
No, I'm sorry.
And then as far as circulation, you know, the curb cuts, as far as the plan, there was actually curb cuts, one around the 24th, two on 23rd, one on 20, oh, I'm sorry, one on 24th, two on 23rd Street permitted, where you had the one on 23rd Street. Traffic engineer will testify to that as far as the traffic requirements. Maximum curb cut width of 24 feet, proposed 24 feet is proposed, which complies with the plan. And then the bicycle parking, as Mr. Stevie mentioned, 92 spaces, which complies. Lighting, the lighting for the building, majority of it is building mounted fixtures. There'll be a wall scotch mounted slightly above, you know, around seven, eight feet, you know, around the height, or a little higher than a typical pedestrian. Those will be dotted lights, and then there will be shielded next to the adjacent properties to prevent spillover to adjoining neighboring properties. In addition to those wall scotches along the perimeter building, along the newer streetscape, there will be dotted lights, again, lower level lighting proposed within the plaza area on Avenue F. And the main purpose of that is just to illuminate the ground area in that public plaza area. Landscaping, there was an open space. Someone asked a question, I believe it was an open space. I believe it was Mr. Clarkin. Open space, the requirement is 10 percent of lot area, 10,000 square feet. In this case, the 10,000 square feet trumps. The proposed project will have 10,364 square feet of green space. Or I'm sorry, open space. And when I say open space on our color rendering here, those are the landscape areas. So that only includes those areas colored in green. So that would be the area of that open landscape area to the north and east of the building. And then there was a smaller landscape strip in between the proposed plaza area and Lot 8. And those are the areas that were considered towards the open space requirement. Conservative, as in the open space requirement does allow you to count, I believe, terraces, balconies, and other sorts of recreational ornament space. Again, we just kind of stuck to the straightforward landscaping space. Along those lines, landscaping, there was a requirement for a minimum of 4,000 square feet of landscape space. Again, the areas colored in green or a planting area along that plaza area. As proposed, there's 9,514 square feet of open landscape area. It had to be contiguous landscape area, so that is only a landscape area to the north and east of the building, so the one towards the rear. The landscaping itself, proposed, it's a mixture of ornamental and shade trees, approximately three shade trees proposed, 21 ornamental trees, and 20 evergreen trees. They do comply with the plan as far as able to withstand an urban environment, minimum of three foot high, and no fruit or berry bearing trees. So that does all comply with the proposed plan. Utilities, just quickly, got sewer, public sewer, public order, electric and gas all in the vicinity of the site. No main extensions are proposed at this time, goal being to tie into the existing services that are located around the property. Storm order, this will be tributary to the combined sewer system. As part of the design, there will be a storm order detention system proposed within the building. There'll be subsurface located, you know, underneath the building, below the parking garage itself or the parking level. That stormer detention system will go, will serve to reduce existing runoff rates by about 69 percent. So it's oversized. Again, that's based on an analysis of the existing system and capacities. And we feel with that over detention, overall, goes to help the combined sewer system as far as holding back, you know, those rainfall events. And then in addition to the work with the capacity of the existing sewer mains that are located within the vicinity of the project. With that, I think that's all I got.
Right. Now, in terms of, you heard a question about the environmental conditions in the property.
Yes.
Can we just discuss that briefly?
Yeah, the app came through the process going through and completing a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. As of now, and there was a Phase 1, I think it was done back, this goes back a little ways, that's why they're updating that Phase 1. They did identify there's some historic fill on the site, which will have to be treated properly as far as during construction. I believe there was some storage tanks, or storage trailers, some type on the property. That may be an area concern that has to be addressed. But in the end, the site itself and whatever's gonna be developed here has to meet NJDEP requirements, and that will be part of that Phase 1, Phase 2 LSRP process that, that will address that.
Did you have an opportunity to review the professional reports and the city, city department reports relative to this application?
I did. I think we were able to accommodate all the recommendations of those reports.
So just for the record, all of the items in the planner's report dated December 27, February? Engineer's report dated December 20, and the MUA report dated December 30, along with the various department reports, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that would conclude my question with Mr. Spurran.
Yeah, in the reports that you just alluded to, I believe, it was either Mr. Russo or Mr. Clarkin's report, there was some mention in there, the suggestion with the garage in changing the texture or the color as you go out of the garage to give pedestrians some sort of sense that they're passing by a driveway. You have no problem with it?
No, I think it's a great suggestion. We'll go with that.
There was also an indication in the report about some sort of visual warning, and that, you're talking about mirrors, that as people enter and egress from the garage, they would be able to see the side street or inside the garage as they're coming in. You're not talking about any type of audio alarms, are you?
No, it wouldn't be audible. It'd just be visual cue, or as you said, the mirrors.
Okay. And again, to recap all of the requirements that you went over as far as bulk variances, there are, as I recall, you mentioning there are no, zero requirements for a variance, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Lawndy.
Where is the detention basin? Do you have it on the drums?
I, I don't, and the reason being, it's based or part of the building. It's gonna be below the building. It'll be part of, you know, designed into the foundation. It's based on the underground storage tank, you know, for layman's terms.
Also, on 24th Street, there's only one curb cutting allowed?
Um... One on Twenty-Fourth, two on Twenty-third are permitted.
Does the entrance and exit count as one or two?
Counts as one, so it's a curb cut, but it's combined in and out.
Right.
Yep.
So, um, was Twenty-Fourth Street ever considered as another entrance and exit?
It was, we looked at it, but, you know, based on the layout of the building, the layout of the parking area, and based on, you know, traffic review, we found that the one on Twenty-third Street was more than sufficient, and with having only the one curb cut, it does allow for, you know, more parking, you know, for it to take and add another access drive. May not work as well with the circulation for one thing, and then two, you start to lose parking spaces.
I know, I think Mr. Russo said that more stackers could be considered, so I think he would only lose two, right? Two or three parking spots?
Uh, correct, and Mr. Stevie might be able to... Is there an elevation difference too, I believe?
That's what he was just pointing out, right?
Yeah, I think there was a, with the finished floors, and there are, there's some elevation relief between Twenty-Fourth Avenue F and Twenty-third Street, there's an elevation difference between basically the floor, the garage, and the street level, that was another issue. Thanks for reminding me.
Okay, thank you.
Just reminded me, on the fire code superficial, he mentioned that there may be a need for, to extend an additional fire hydrant in that site, and also to, may need to loop the system and provide larger supply lines. Did you look into that?
We did, we actually discussed it with him, as far as the supply lines, we're gonna have to do flow tests, we're gonna have to look at the calculations with the MUA as far as capacity for fire flows, that's all gonna happen, it's part of the building design, so whatever needs to happen to, you know, for the building to meet fire code, you know, that's gonna need to happen.
Right.
And along the lines of that, we had a similar conversation as far as the hydrant, you know, if you determine that there's a more hydrant needed, I think we counted there's about four in the area already, you know, one on Twenty-third Street, I think there's one at each intersection on Avenue F, and then another one on Twenty-Fourth, seems to be pretty well covered, but if one additional needed to be added, you know, we'll be...
But that being said, during construction or prior to construction, that is also tested for pressure and adequacy for the fire department standard, is that correct?
Yes, at the end of the day, the building has to work with whatever the system's capable of providing.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any questions? Yes.
I'm looking at the elevations, I don't see a difference. I think it's twelve-eighth throughout the ground floor to second floor, and then...
Yeah, I looked at the building elevations, I don't know if they show it, but if you look sheet five of the site plan, which is the grading plan, part of the submitted package, and the elevations on Twenty-Fourth Street, they vary between eleven, twelve, ten feet, something along those lines. East Twenty-Fourth Street, the elevation is, it varies again, but in the area of the driveway, it's like fifteen, fourteen, thirteen and a half. The finished floor for the majority of the parking garage is about fourteen point four three, so when you look at that, you know, East Twenty-Fourth Street is higher.
I'm sorry, you're on page five of the...
Of the site plan sheet, so the dynamic engineering plans.
Yes, your plan.
Yeah, sheet five.
And what about elevations?
Elevations, you see, like, if you look at Twenty-Fourth Street, you'll see some dash lines with some numbers.
Right.
Yeah, so you got eleven, you know, as you're moving closer to Avenue F, it's actually blocked by that label that says E-X, but that's Contour Twelve, and then as you move up, you got Contour Thirteen. And then same with East Twenty-Fourth Street, starting at, you know, Avenue F and working your way down, you have elevation sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, and then the garage was set, working with the Avenue F elevations, which are around fifteen, so a little higher, we set it at around fourteen point four three. So, it's close to Twenty-Fourth Street, but when you get over to Twenty-Fourth Street, you're talking elevation difference of, you know, three feet or two feet.
Okay, I, uh, what's required or it's needed? The fourteen, you said?
Well, the fourteen, you know, part of it is, it's, you know, within a flood hazard area as well, it's an elevation of thirteen point one for the flood hazard area, so the building would be trying to keep the parking deck as high as possible for that reason.
Understood. I was just thinking maybe another exit and entrance would help the traffic in the morning and the back?
I'll defer to the traffic engineer, he's gonna, he did a detailed traffic analysis on that, and he'll be able to walk through that.
All right, great, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Russo, have, are you satisfied with the answers to your report?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clarkin?
I am also.
Thank you. Mr. Sparone, if you could put that microphone back and go over to the podium where Mr. Muselli is. Is there anybody in the audience that has a question of the engineer, Mr. Sparone? Please come forward. I'm sorry, sir, you'll be right next.
Thank you.
My name is Connie D. Vincent, I live on Twenty-Fourth and Avenue F. I have a couple of questions. One, how long will the project take to be built?
To be built? Eight, eighteen to twenty-four months is what I'm being told.
Twenty-four months, okay. Um, there's a school five blocks down that's really, really congested, my kids go there, and these cops every day or day alone chasing people away because of the traffic. Um, there's three ways in to Back Street on Avenue F. Twenty-Fourth Street, when it floods, they shut it down, so nobody can get in over there. So the only way in is the thirtieth and thirty-second. My basement floods all the time where I live, and when I come out, I open the door, your building will be right there, which will be blocking my sun. I don't know how many of you like sun, but I love the sun. You guys like the sun? And everybody, I'm the superintendent of my building and everybody that lives there says there won't be any sunlight, they will block everything, it's a very quiet area, and like I said, you've got five, five blocks down is the school, you've got Twenty-Fourth Street which is shut down when it floods, and it floods a lot. My basement floods a lot.
Do you have a question of the engineer?
Yes. Okay, my question is, how are you gonna, how are you gonna have something so massive in that area when there's really nowhere to park? Everybody that lives there is gonna need at least four parking places. I know I do, and everybody in my building does. So that's one, and then the sewer, well, it smells really bad, this major sewer blockage down that area, so you definitely have to put in another pipeline, somehow, some way, it has to work, because it's backing up every time it rains. So can you do that? Can you put in another one? And what about control, I mean, the smell in the summer?
Let him answer the question that you asked. What, when you, let me rephrase it if I may, when you put in a building, aren't there tests for the water supply and the sewage that have to be met prior to the building going up?
Yeah, as part of the design process and the permitting process, capacity of the water and sewer system for the building have to be, have to be shown.
Exactly, and like I say, in the summertime, the sun, the heat, the sewer system smells very, very bad, and then you've got, you know, feces, stuff coming up all, all on Twenty-Fourth Street under the bridge, and it was so bad, it shut down all the businesses and church and everything on that side. You guys know, you look here. I'm worried about my kid's school, we can't even drop kids off now, but I have to go parking and getting tickets. So how's, how's it gonna work with all the extra driving, traffic? And what happens if there's an emergency? How can we get out? I'm worried about the safety of my children.
There's a traffic report, and our traffic engineer detailed a traffic analysis.
Okay, so then I lose my son, right?
I don't think so, but okay, thank you for your question.
My last name is D. Vincent, D.I. of Vincent. Connie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Richard DeWeland, D.E.W. L.A.N.D. Good evening, Mr. Sparone. Have you testified earlier, you are a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
I am.
You're familiar with the term, I heard you mention it before, LSRP?
Yes.
That stands for Licensed Site Remediation Professionals, is that right?
Correct.
Are you one?
I am not.
Do you know if your client has retained an LSRP?
Yeah, he's actually in the process of working with my environmental firm to work along those lines.
Do you know what his name is as you sit here?
He hasn't been retained yet.
He hasn't?
And there may not be one required, it's gonna really depend on the Phase One and Phase Two analysis.
You testified earlier that a Phase One had been conducted earlier, do you know, would you recall what timeframe that was done approximately?
I was, I would say ten years ago. That's, that's why we're going through and doing the updated Phase One, Phase Two.
Okay, so, has the Phase, has an updated Phase One been completed?
Not as, not yet, no.
And you said you moved on to a Phase Two, with the Phase Two environmental assessment, there would be some active soil warnings or groundwater monitoring wells dropped, is that correct?
Potentially, depending on the results of the First One.
Are you familiar with any groundwater monitoring wells or soil warnings conducted by your client to this date?
I'm not.
Okay. Do you have any knowledge, Mr. Sparone, whether an initial receptor evaluation report has been completed for the site?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just very quickly, I think we're getting into the areas of DEPs province, I would really appreciate, these are...
Hold on, let, I really may not speak.
We're getting into the DEP permit requirements, and there are so many different factors at play that the state regulates, that we just can't give solid answers, no matter if we had completed a, completed a Phase One or a Phase Two.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Muselli, hold on, please, be respectful here and let people talk, and I'll let you talk, okay? But, Mr. Muselli, would it be fair to say that not only in your project, but any project in the city, that before you get the okay to build, if there's any environment, you would have to get approval from the state regulators that control the Environmental Protection Agency, is that correct?
That's correct, and there are so many factors at play there.
And none, no construction could start unless you have that approval, is that correct?
That is accurate.
Thank you.
That answers one of my questions, and I just have a couple more follow-up questions. Do you know, Mr. Sparone, and maybe Mr. Muselli, you know, you can answer, I know you're not sworn, but, do you know if any of these reports that you testified to have been submitted to the DEP, other than the two thousand and six Phase One assessment?
I'm unaware, again, we're in the process of, you know, the environmental portion of my firm is working with the client on those parts.
Is Dynamic Engineering an environmental consulting firm as well?
Yes, we have an affiliate, Dynamic Earth.
Are there LSRP's among that, okay. If, this might be premature, but if there was a groundwater impact or an impact to the groundwater table, do you, do you have any estimate on what the delay would be for getting compliance with the DEP?
I don't.
Would you have any knowledge as you sit here today what the cost estimate for site investigation or remediation would be?
I don't.
Do you know why your client didn't have its LSRP, didn't retain its LSRP, or didn't bring its LSRP to testify here tonight?
I don't.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
If I just may, if I can respond to that?
Yes, sure.
The reason we didn't get an LSRP to testify here tonight is because we have to comply with...
Mr. Muselli, would you say, Mr. Sparone, if I could sit down?
Sir, sir, somebody's speaking, just be a little courteous, somebody is speaking. Yes, Mr. Muselli.
We will have to comply with DEP requirements, whether we get the LSRP here to testify about what those requirements are or not. The engineer will have oversight over that, the planners will look at every, everyone will look at everything before there's a permit issued, and so having the LSRP here tonight is not, is not required, DEP prehends the field in this regard.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Musowski.
I just want to make a very quick comment, Mr. Sparone, it just seems that you're not prepared for him. It seems that you're not prepared to answer the environmental issues, I have had a, let me, let me answer the question, Mr. Garrett.
Answer, ask.
I'm not answering, I'm asking the question.
Ask the question.
Thank you, you made that very clear.
Yes.
It's, Mr. Sparone, very clear that you're not prepared to talk about environmental issues tonight, is that very, is that a safe assessment?
No, and the environmental issues we're here as far as, you know, for site plan and zoning requirements.
Okay, but the point is, the gentleman prior to me had asked you some questions, and you just seemed like you were very evasive and you had no answers. To me, it's very clear that this presentation is not a hundred percent clear to the public, and it seems like the environmental issues have not been addressed, Phase One, Phase Two. You didn't address Phase One, and then you're moving on to Phase Two. If your company, you're presenting a fifty million dollar project, you should have all your dots crossed and all your dots crossed and teeth. Sit down, Muselli. I don't want to talk, I'm not asking any questions, tell him to sit down.
There wasn't a question, and I believe...
Every time he gets uncomfortable, he stands up.
Sir.
I don't want him, I don't want to talk to him.
Sir, I'm conducting a hearing here, if you don't behave, if you don't behave and be respectful...
I am, but I don't like when he gets up every time he gets up and says anything.
I don't care what you don't like. I don't care, but while you're in here, you'll act and behave in a civil manner.
Okay.
Do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Muselli?
Mr. Chairman, as, as I have said, we, he is testifying that we will comply with DEP requirements, that we will cling to residential standards, how that will be accomplished is largely, I mean, you don't even know, you don't know until you start digging, and we could, it's an outside agency approval, every approvals, should this be approved, is subject to outside agency approvals, DEP's one of them. We need DEP's approval to move forward, but that is not something that we need to hash out here besides to say we are investigating it, and we will remediate it to the requirements of the DEP, and that's it.
Let me, let me ask a question of our board engineer, is what Mr. Muselli's saying correct, that before any construction begins, there is a process that takes place that must get approval of the state environmental protection?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I would also add that even if they had all of their Phase One and Phase Two, this board doesn't have the jurisdiction to hear it or approve it based on those findings.
Thank you.
Okay, the point I'm making is...
Do you have any more questions?
Yes, I do. Why would you move on from Phase One to Phase Two if Phase One wasn't completed?
That's not what I said.
You said that you went on from Phase One and then you went on to Phase Two.
Yes, yes, so, about, so the process is doing an updated Phase One, and then we work through the Phase Two process.
Okay, and one final question, Mr. Sparone, and, you know, I know it's an uncomfortable position for you, but it seems like, you know, do you think based on this project being built, do you think that your attorney, Mr. Muselli, would have the proper credentials and have all environmental issues addressed as soon as we're up here talking, as you don't have to wait to go to the state, you should have to hear, listen, this is all clear, the soil is perfect, we're ready to roll, and it doesn't seem like that's the case, do you feel that way?
No. You don't.
Anybody else have any questions?
I still...
Yes, ma'am, come up.
I still want to know, who, who knows?
Come up to the podium, ma'am.
I still want to know, is it the guy for the...
Speak, speak to the podium.
I want to know the occupancy level. I was told the other guy doesn't know, does this guy know? Who's going to give me the occupancy level of this building, of the retail space, everything, everything? What is the occupancy level of this building? And the retail space?
Do we, do we have any?
Our planner.
Our planner will be, the planner will be able to address that, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely nothing. You're gonna talk to her first.
I'm curious for this one.
This should not be voted on, at all.
Could you tell me, I don't know if you're the right person, what is the rent that was gonna be?
Excuse me, the rent?
The rent.
That, I don't know.
Who would you ask for that?
Mr. Marceli, do we have a range that you estimate it would be a?
We would estimate that it would be in, in line with the recent rentals, um, up at 1040 Kennedy. Um, it would, it would be luxury rental, it would be higher end, it would be over-
2,000.
2,000 and up.
2,000 a month?
Yes.
On the east side? Oh, my God.
Ma'am?
That's okay.
I know, Rosemary Bond, the 108 East 25th Street.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Judy Burns, 99 East 27th Street. Are you aware that most of this town is senior citizens? They live on fixed incomes.
Yes.
Very fixed incomes. Where are we gonna get $2,000 a month for one room? For one room?
Yep.
You don't care, because you're not gonna live there. Or maybe you could afford to live there. We certainly could not.
Again, I'm, I'm the engineer.
You're the engineer.
Yes.
So you got the bucks. You got the bucks.
Ma'am, ma'am, just, just to try to answer, just to try to answer your question.
That was my question.
This is a rental apartment, the builder is taking the risk that if he builds it, he's gonna get people that are ready, willing, and able to pay that. The entire risk is on a developer and the builder, and he's not forcing anybody to move in there and pay that rent.
Well, they certainly will not have-
Okay, thank you.
-the retired people that they own there.
Right, I understand, I'm retired myself. Anybody else have any questions?
Just, I only want to ask a quick question here. Um, I wanna know, I know you're the engineer, um, do you know who the builder is?
Who the, it's the applicant, it's Parkview Realty.
Okay, well, where is Parkview Realty? Because nobody can seem to get any answers on who Parkview Realty is, nobody wants to answer the question. Somehow, you, you don't, you don't have to look at Mr. Marceli, you can probably answer the question.
I don't have a, I don't have a tour, I know you're gonna sit down, but as a matter of fact, I'm gonna get a call, please. So, it's a, it's an LLC, it's an LLC, there are two members- He can't answer, he's an engineer, he doesn't know. I do.
You'll have your time to speak.
No, I have my time to speak, and that's it, if I'm in order, I'll, I'll speak. Who is Parkview Realty? We want to know who they are, are members, the disclosure-
Tell everybody. Let him answer the question.
He's not gonna answer. The disclosure statement that's submitted with this plan of where the application has that information. There are two members, it is Ari Waldman and, um, oh, I forgot the other guy's name. It's in the application.
He's paying you, you're all here?
He's not paying me, Ari, it's-
Who's paying you?
Ari Waldman, and that name has been brought up multiple times, so it's, it, there are two members of the LLC, um, and, so that's it, those are the peoples, that's who's gonna develop it, that's who's gonna get a contract to-
They're not here tonight, since they're representing the, you know, Parkview Realty, how come they're not here tonight?
Yep. They, tonight's application is about compliance with the redevelopment plan requirements, there's no need for the applicant to testify, the professionals here can testify much better than he can about that.
Well, I had a problem with Parkview Realty in the past, they, they had a residential property, it pressed the street from me, and I put a complaint thing on, sent this copy or letter to the South Bay, and I never got a response from anybody, and that was from only one residential unit.
Why would Waldman is the other guy's name? Um, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm unaware of your prior complaint, thank you, I'm unaware of your prior complaint, uh, and I don't know that it bears on this application.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm just thinking, Melanie Flora, 108 East 25th Street. I don't know if you can answer this, maybe, Mr. Marceli, I'd like to hear from you, if you can answer it. I have no objection.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right. Mrs. Flora, you mentioned these two fellows' names, Parkview, uh, as the owners?
Developers.
Right, did it, did it, are they the owners?
Who actually, okay, who actually built the building?
A contractor.
And who would that be?
They haven't picked the contractor yet, because we don't have an approval?
Okay, I don't know if you guys can answer this, because I, maybe you're gonna put me to another board.
Try it.
But I'm curious, will there be abatements on this 40 to 50 million dollar project?
I have, I have no idea, ma'am.
Who will know?
The, the planning board either approves or disapproves of a project, any abatements would have to go before the city council.
Okay, I can respect that, but just in case somebody knows something, that, you know, no, it's not your territory, but can you tell me, an estimated tax on a 50 to, a 40 to 50 million pro, uh, dollar project, what would, if I came in, I wanna build, and I don't get any abatement, what would I pay on taxes, do you know?
I don't know, no. The, the tax assessor would probably know, and maybe the planner may know an estimate.
Is that terraced?
Mr. Chairman, and, and I can-
But that's not part of the planning board that's-
Well, it kind of is, you know why? You know why? Because, and I will, I will agree, you've done everything, you've put all your dots, crossed your Ts, redevelopment plan, great, great, nothing wrong with it, but you know something? It's too big in that area, okay? It's too big.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Okay, I question, question, I get the question.
I, I went for this.
Okay, you know me, I have, gotta be one. I asked before, and I didn't get an answer to my satisfaction, as to the percentage of the compact cars, and when I asked that, I said, how do you determine that? The 180 units, and I assume that there's gonna be maybe two people in a unit, and let's assume they have two cars, but let, how do you determine? Do, are you gonna qualify, you have a compact car, you can live, you can move in, or you can't, and if they don't have a compact car, where's the car gonna park?
Well, sometimes they don't even have a car.
And how about I, yeah, in, in, in the bimbo land, you know what I mean?
Do you have any further questions?
Okay, yes, I do, I have a question.
What is the question of the issue?
The question is this.
Yeah.
With the proposed parking that has been done in the building, okay, what about the people that visit this building? Where do they park?
I guess.
Where? You got, you got maybe two cars.
Where to visit his park when they visit you?
Excuse me?
Where to visit his park when they visit you?
I don't have 180, uh, unit apartment next to me currently, nor do I have an 18 unit or a fourth, uh, story building there, on one dead-end block.
But it's the same question.
Where do they park? Does any consideration for the six-family unit, has it any, a six-story, has any consideration been done, how it's gonna impact the residents who are here, not getting tax abatements, the residents who are here paying their taxes? I mean, do you guys have, it might be, it might be legally you can do it, but it's not the right thing, nor is it the right spot. And I'm really disheartened that everybody can come out here and listen, and yet nobody can give you a civil answer. You know, as to what, no, don't take offense, I don't wanna get on your backside. But I'm saying, we, we all inconvenience ourselves to come out here, and we're not getting the real answers. Like, for instance, the storage, like, for instance-
Man, man, we answered the question on the storage, we answered the question on the environmental, we've answered it.
But you guys are gonna vote on-
You may not like the answer.
You may pass something today where nothing has been done after, and then what do we do?
Done after, I, I don't understand the question.
I think, when plans are being done like this, you should say, okay, if, maybe if you can't go to the tube, okay, the storage will be addressed, and we'll have a storage expert, here he is, Mr. Joe Blow, come on up, Mr. Storage Man. Uh, I'm not being cute.
No. Do you have any further questions, ma'am?
Why, you can phone me up? Thank you, I'm back.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Peter Fenn, 127 North 12th Street. I have a lot more to say in the public portion there, but I just wanted to get the correct span of, uh, Mr. Waldman's name and this, uh, line of urban. I'm sorry, can you slow it down?
W.
W.
A.
L.
D.
T.
M.A.N.
M.A.N.
And Liebber Rubin, L.I.E.B.E.L.R.U.B.I.N.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Sloan.
Thank you.
We are gonna take a short, five-minute break, and we will return shortly. Secretary Lawan, uh, Marcela, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Lawandi. Commissioner Quintella. Secretary Marcela is here, Chairman Garrett.
Here. Okay, Mr. Marceli, we may continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as my next witness, I would like to call, uh, traffic engineer, Craig Perigoy.
Sure, my name's Craig Perigoy, P.E.R.E.G.O.Y.
Mr. Perigoy, can you please present your qualifications to the board?
Uh, sure, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I've been working as a traffic engineer for almost 17 years now. I have appeared on hundreds of occasions as an expert in traffic, uh, including here in Bayonne many times.
Yes, uh, your partner, I guess, or a member of your firm, Mr. Steiger?
It's Joe Steiger, yes, yes, ma'am.
We accept him as an expert witness, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Perigoy, did your office prepare a traffic study in connection with this development?
Yes, we did.
Can you please just take us through that in terms of traffic levels?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, what we did, obviously, is focus on the intersection of 23rd Street and Avenue F. Our access point is on 23rd Street, all the entering and all the exiting traffic that we'll be generating is gonna be focused at that intersection, so if that intersection works, then we know the impacts will be lesser up and down the roadway. Uh, what we looked at is the worst-case time periods, we're looking at the weekday morning and weekday evening rush hour time periods, that's, uh, 7:00 to 9:00 in the weekday morning, and about 4:30 to 6:30 in the evening. So we took traffic counts at 23rd and Avenue F during those time periods, and then isolate within each of those two-hour windows, the single busiest hour, and that's the peak hour, the weekday morning and weekday evening peak hour time periods. Um, based on that data, Avenue F, this, this entire area basically is, uh, very lightly traveled, it's kind of, um, offset on its own, you've heard some of the neighbors talking about how there's, uh, only limited connections into the rest of the city, so it's not, Avenue F's not necessarily a larger through street, it primarily serves the, uh, the local area. So the traffic runs quite light on Avenue F and on 23rd Street. And what we've done is prepared a quite a capacity analysis to get a baseline of exactly what's going on there now. Um, we input the traffic volumes, stop control, lane widths, things like that, and into a computer program, and it spits back to us the, uh, average delay per vehicle, in this case, at the stop signs on, at the stop sign on 23rd Street, uh, and then relates that to a level of service, A being the best, or the least amount of delay, and F being the worst, and in this case, 23rd Avenue F is at a level of service A, it's very light, uh, very light traffic volumes going through there. Now, what is that gonna look like in the future? That's where, uh, we need to make some projections based on what we're, what we're proposing here. And I do that with the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, it's basically a compilation of traffic counts taken at various land uses throughout the United States, in this case, I look at, uh, residential and obviously the small retail portion, uh, to determine how much traffic this particular building's gonna generate during those peak hours, during the single busiest hour in the morning, single busiest hour in the evening. Uh, and based on the ITE data, uh, we would generate 56 trips, a trip being a vehicle either entering or exiting during the morning peak hour, and 78 trips during the evening peak hour. Now, a couple of things to keep in mind, I'm taking into account that retail generating some traffic. Realistically, it's going to be a more of a local, um, retail type of establishment that's gonna serve the proposed building and residents in the neighborhood, it's not necessarily gonna be the type of use where people drive to, although I took it into account as it, as it would be that. Uh, obviously, one of the features of the residential portion of the development is its proximity to the light rail, that's really, um, what's, what's driving this development, and what I think is gonna be an attractive feature for perspect, prospective tenants. So some of those vehicle trips that the ITE tells me are gonna be replaced by people using the light rail, using mass transit, because the ITE data is primarily sourced from more suburban type of residential developments, whereas this is, um, certainly more of an urban characteristic, and obviously, like I said, the light rail is gonna be a key factor. Nevertheless, I kept those higher numbers, I didn't take any credit for that because obviously there's other development in the area, and we wanna really look at a worst-case scenario, we really wanna test that intersection and make sure that we're okay, um, in the future. So I add that traffic volume, plus background growth of rate that the New Jersey DOT publishes, I increase the, the existing volumes that we counted, add our higher numbers than are we're really gonna see, and reanalyze that intersection. And based on that reanalysis, the increase in delays less than a second, and it still works at a level of service A. So there's plenty of capacity available at that specific intersection. Then, people who leave our building or are arriving are gonna come from either the north or south of Avenue F, so the impacts will be reduced even farther, so we have no impact at the immediate intersection where we generate most of our traffic, and certainly it'd have lesser impacts up and down Avenue F and throughout the city. Um, there was some discussion earlier about the potential of access to 24th Street, and we did look at that, but as you can see from, uh, from this analysis, it's not necessary from a traffic perspective, and really weighing the loss of spaces in the garage, the grade differential, and the loss of newer old street spaces, it, it just made more sense, since we do have the capacity at 23rd Street to just provide the access on the one roadway. That's obviously very lightly traveled, uh, uh, as compared to Avenue F. Uh, that's essentially it for the traffic end of things, and in terms of parking, we obviously meet the redevelopment plan parking requirements, so there's really not much, much to go into there, obviously. And, uh, yeah, that's, that's essentially the, the crux of the report.
So was you saying that the layout meets acceptable design standards?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And that not only read about in the plan, but acceptable designs.
And that it will accommodate the, the proposed uses in the building?
Absolutely.
And is it, is your conclusion that the access, circulation, and parking design will provide efficient, convenient, and safe traffic movement onto and off of the site?
Yes, absolutely, certainly.
Mr. Chairman, that will conclude my questioning of Mr. Perigoy.
Uh, the, the only question I have is, and again, you, you stated that the level of traffic there would be A-traffic, which is unusual in the city of Bayonne, there were other areas that do not, uh, achieve that anyway. Uh, but again, I just wanna perfectly understand this, when you do the projections with a[1632.62] When you do the projections with a building of that size, uh, the program that you have in projecting or extrapolating that type of data, you did not consider the proximity of this building in conjunction with the light rail, is that correct?
No, I assumed that it was going to generate as much traffic as a suburban apartment building in Sussex County would generate.
But your professional opinion, if you did, then these numbers would be much better than, than what you've stated, is that correct?
The impacts would be lesser and certainly likely will be.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions of the traffic engineer? Mr. Russo?
Just one comment. Also in your report, you prepare a sensitivity analysis, I believe you called it. Could you just discuss that with the board?
Yes, uh, again, testing the worst-case scenario on Twenty-third Street and Avenue F, we wanted to make sure that, um, the one access point could handle as much traffic as possible. So we did continue to add more volume on the Twenty-third Street to make sure that there wasn't an issue and certainly that that intersection has the capacity to handle many times more traffic than we're, we're generating.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Parkin, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Mr. Gerl, Chairman Gerl, Garland?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Mack?
I just wanted to ask, it was said before that this year parking might be fifty percent, I believe, but the, the development plan says that only thirty-five percent of the spaces will be compact.
It's thirty-five percent compact, that's what's proposed.
Spaces, it's closer to forty spaces that are compact, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Actually, I think it's sixty-six.
Whatever thirty percent is. Thirty-five percent, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Perigoy, could you take the microphone over here?
Sure.
Is there anybody in the audience that has a question of the traffic engineer? Please come forward. Yes, sir. Uh, we'll let...
Hi, Jody Markie, I'm R.K.E.Y. Were any of the traffic studies done by humans or are they all computer-generated models?
We actually go physically count the cars during those peak hours, but in terms of the number of vehicles generated, that's based on published data, published studies and research that's been done.
Was the backup of parking, uh, entering and exiting due to the parking situation inside the parking garage taken into effect as far as mechanical errors, human error?
In terms of the stacked spaces?
In terms of the stacking spaces, in terms of humans parking their vehicles, the time, amount of time it takes for five cars to get in and three cars to get out?
Yes, yes, that, that works.
By a computer?
That works at Twenty-third and Avenue F, so it certainly works.
By a computer, because there's no, there's no system there now. So I'm trying to understand how this model works. A computer says it'll work.
It's a computer.
Was there a pedestrian study done in the traffic report?
Uh, no, we did, we counted the pedestrians when we do our traffic counts and...
Because your high peak times are when my children are walking to school. So from a pedestrian standpoint, in a traffic study, how do you propose that this is safe for the children in the neighborhood?
Well, they're not, they're not my peak times, that's just the peak times at the roadway.
But you testified that the peak times in the morning and the afternoon, and I'm letting you know, because those are my peak times, my children walking to the neighborhood school, okay? How do we then say that this is safe if there wasn't a study done? Because you said there was no pedestrian study done.
There was pedestrian counts.
You didn't report that. Can you give us that information?
Uh...
The amount of pedestrians at the peak time?
Through the intersection, the busiest peak time, it was about eighteen.
About, or it was?
It was eighteen pedestrians.
Adults or children? Now you're talking about people walking to the light rail. You know what, I'm, I'm trying to get an understanding of how the flow, traffic, people think cars, and I'm thinking cars, this is my corner. People think cars, let's think people. So now, where are the people exiting? And, uh, let me just finish and then you can answer everything together. Where are the people exiting this structure? If all of the cars are exiting on Twenty-third during this peak hour and you say about only fifty-three are leaving, so out of a hundred and eight cars, only fifty-something cars are going to work in the morning? I don't know if I...
In one hour, in the busiest hour.
Yeah, I, I don't know if the computer's correct on that.
It's probably, it'll be less.
No, it's going to be more. And I'll sit there and count it if we need to.
Okay.
Um, how, how do we make sure that the pedestrian, this is, this is a pedestrian area, this is a small community, this, this side of town, we walk? We want our children to continue to walk. So where, where are the people exiting the building and what kind of study was done to monitor that that corner will be able to handle it?
The people are exiting the building on Twenty-third Street, which carries little to no pedestrian traffic. The pedestrians are on Avenue F across Twenty-third Street there, existed at...
How many feet from Avenue F to Twenty-third?
We're not creating that, in fact, we're removing a curb cut from Avenue F.
I don't need a curb cut, we're walking.
Yes.
How, how many feet from the exit on Avenue F to the garage entrance on Twenty-third Street? So you have people walking out on the Avenue F exit and you have people driving out of the Twenty-third. Are you aware there's no light on that corner?
Yes.
Okay, will one be put in?
No, absolutely not. We've got, generate nearly enough, there's not nearly enough traffic at that intersection.
According to a computer, there's not nearly enough traffic?
No, according to federal standards and regulations...
What are those standards, do you know them?
The manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, you need to meet a specific criteria, volume of traffic, railroad crossing, things of that nature, to consider a traffic signal or the state would never allow it, nobody would ever allow it. We are not even close to that volume at this intersection.
So between, in the, the morning peak hour between eight AM and nine AM, you're, somebody on this panel counted only eighteen pedestrians crossing? That's what you're testifying to. Were they crossing Twenty-third Street or were they crossing Avenue F or both? And how many crossed each side?
Walking, primarily they're walking up and down Avenue F. Nobody's, there's very little of any pedestrian activity across where we're proposing our driveway. Where mostly the pedestrians are on Avenue F, we're removing a driveway.
I'm talking about the intersection, not the driveway. You're correct in that statement because it's a dead-end block, so yeah, nobody's going that way.
Which is why...
I'm talking about the intersection, you are the traffic expert, yes?
Yes.
Let's move to the intersection, crossing the street, Twenty-third Street and Avenue F.
Ma'am, just let me answer the question.
He's not answering the question.
No, but you're not giving him opportunity. You're talking over one of them.
We're not changing that intersection. It, it's going to be the same way it is today. We're not doing any of that intersection at all.
I understand that. What I'm trying to understand is, as the traffic expert, how do you then say that that intersection will be able to handle pedestrian traffic?
It will handle it the way it does today. There's no, we're not changing any configuration.
There's nothing there today for the pedestrians to have to watch out for?
There is a driveway on Avenue F where pedestrians go that we're removing.
I'm in the intersection, come to the intersection with me.
It's staying just like it is today. There's not, there'll be no change in the safety of that intersection whatsoever.
You're adding a hundred and eighty-unit building. Don't tell me the corner my children cross the street to get to school will not change as far as safety.
So, well, safety is, safety is based on intersection geometry, visibility, design. None of that is changing.
Was that tested for the study? Adding a hundred and eighty units, was that pedestrian safety tested?
Additional, that's it. That's the only thing that's going to change. You wouldn't even notice the difference.
Was pedestrian safety tested in accordance to a hundred and eighty-unit building added to that specific intersection, yes or no?
Look, I don't know how to test pedestrian safety, there's no way to do that.
Those are my...
It essentially has the adequate safety...
Anybody else have a question? Yes, Mr. LaPulusa.
Gary LaPulusa, one on two, West Forty-sixth Street. In your, um, your evaluation, how many extra pedestrians were included in that study? Is there a number? In other words, new construction will have pedestrians in the morning during that hour that you conducted the maximum peak, I guess?
Yes, some of the vehicular trips that I mentioned that, that we looked into, because we're looking at the worst-case traffic scenario, would be converted to pedestrian trips and walk along the sidewalks to the light...
But there's no number of pedestrians in that study?
No.
Because even if we took, let's say, thirty-three percent, what did you say, eighty-seven cars, I believe it was?
Uh, in the PM, it's seventy-eight, that's the highest. Fifty-six in the morning.
Seventy-eight, fifty-six in the morning?
And seventy-eight, and that's in or out.
So that's about, what, I don't know, thirty-something percent, would you say? Forty percent?
Of what?
Of the a hundred and eighty-nine cars?
Oh, oh, in terms of, well, if there were a hundred and eighty-nine cars in there? Yeah, I suppose. About thirty percent.
So you have all these cars coming out, and if cars want to get back in, it's, you're not going to have any problem making left into there with the cars and all that?
Not at all.
And... Here's the thing, I know you're not really widening the street, so that's my concern with that. Also, the mechanics of the garage, how long is it going to take for that mechanical thing to move three or four spots over, put a car down, when you have cars building up inside the garage? How long does it take a car to get out of there if it has to move like that?
I mean, I, I, you saw the video, it's not very long, but we're talking about nine, that's only nine spaces, it's not, not the entire a hundred and eighty-nine, only nine spaces in the far back of the garage are going to use that, that lift system.
Only nine?
Yes.
Okay, but you still have, let's say, a hundred and eighty-nine cars. Another question is, are you charging money for people to park underneath?
Am I? No.
Not your...
An advocate? I, I, I don't know.
Will the building charge extra to park underneath?
I, I don't know that that's been determined. I don't know.
Okay, maybe you can answer, can somebody else answer that for me? Mr. Chairman, can you maybe?
I have no idea whether they're going to charge. It's been my experience that some apartment buildings, the overwhelming majority, a parking space is included in the rental.
Okay, but at ten forty...
The building hasn't been built yet, I don't know what the term, the condition...
But at ten forty, which they said this was...
But I'm just trying to understand what, what would be the relevance of...
The relevance is because of the charging for parking underneath, that may drive people to not take those spots and park on the street.
Okay, I see your point. I, I don't know. Mr. Marceli, can you shed further light on this?
Mr. Chairman, it is, it is not anticipated that that would be a separate line item in, in the rent that would be included in the rent as part of the rent. Um, so they will pay for it and they will get a space assigned, um...
Which would be the normal...
Which would be the normal course, they're not...
So included in the...
It's going to be included in their price, they're not going to line item it and say, oh, it's an option, you don't need to take it.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Uh, no, but it was based on ten forty, so I get a couple of calls every now and then about people parking on the street there, so I figured I would answer that question. The traffic study, do you have, the traffic study, how many people are going left, how many people are going right on Twenty-third Street?
Sure. You want to know today, existing or what?
Uh, I would like to know what you've seen, I guess during peak hour in the morning.
Uh, during the morning peak hour, coming out of Twenty-third Street from our site side, there were five lefts and, five rights and one left.
So you're only, okay, out on Twenty-third Street, that's correct. How about going the opposite way if you were coming up from Prospect?
Have I got one?
Yeah, coming to Twenty-third, right.
Uh, in the morning, it was nine lefts and seven rights, so a little more evenly split.
And what would be the anticipated rights and lefts with this building constructed?
We pretty much projected a fifty-fifty split as you come out onto Twenty-third.
For about fifty-six cars, that's what I'm asking you, so then it would be a two-way?
Slightly more, we put slightly more make in the left because that's the more difficult movement to look at the worst-case scenario, but for the most part, under the build conditions, you have twenty-two rights, twenty-two lefts in the morning, and in the evening, seventeen rights and eighteen lefts.
And you don't foresee any backups at all on this?
No, that's very, very light traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question of the traffic engineer? Yes, sir.
Melanie Flora.
Just one second, sir.
Okay.
No, no, somebody was coming from the back, go ahead, proceed.
Has, when you did your traffic study, had you, had, okay, you said the peak hours and you listed them as seven to nine in the morning, fifty-six trips, seventy-eight trips in the evening, yada, yada. Okay. Has, in your traffic study, has anything been taken into consideration all the traffic that decides to go to and from the Walmart, to and from the Lowe's, to and from the shop and stop, and let's not forget the occasional person who gets lost there looking for the cruise ship when it's in? That's the first part of my question. The second part of my question is, well, I think Gary had taken some of it, because I wanted to know if the units, the, the parking was included in the rental, I know that's not yours, but if it wasn't, then the people who live in this development can easily sell their, if it is, they can sell their parking should they not have a car? So you'd have more people going into the building. I'm concerned about what happens when visitors come. We have the holidays, people come, my family along there could be thirty, forty people. I'm fortunate enough I could park them where I am. You can't do that on Twenty-fourth and Twenty-fifth, and you're not going to be able to do that should this huge building be, be recognized. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, it's, it'll, okay, you've got Twenty-Second Street which floods, the Thirtieth and Thirty-second, and of course, on Thirty, Thirtieth Street you have a school. As the gal before me said, people go and drop their kids off.
But somewhere in, is there a question?
Yes, the question is this, I, I don't, the question is this, a, a building that man's size, and even though you may have this parking and you took a survey, and my question is this, have you ever taken a survey between the hours of five-thirty to seven o'clock in that area? Because you can't find a parking place. Have you ever taken a, and that's with the existing non-building, have you ever taken that survey?
A parking survey?
Yes.
No.
I think you should. Try, uh, six-thirty, six o'clock, seven-thirty. You go down there, you can't find a spot. Well, they can school us side by side and they're only parking near because one side is the school, so there's no, there's no residents. We got residents from Twenty-first Street moving on to Thirtieth Street because there's nothing in between those streets.
Ma'am, I, I just...
Get it, I got you, but I got to make this board aware, just like I got to question him.
Thank you.
It should, you know, it should come into what you decide to do on this.
Thank you.
Sorry, but not really.
That is a gentleman here first.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Morris, one-twenty-three Avenue C, Bayonne, New Jersey. I have a question regarding the safety issues of your parking garage. Will this garage have any type of safety sensors built into the doors when the children might be passing by and decide to try to go underneath the doors as they're going up or down?
Yes.
Okay, will there be any safety sensors on the sidewalk or within the perimeter of the garage when cars are exiting or entering the garage and pedestrians and children are passing by?
Well, I think that was mentioned, uh, will provide the mirrors so the pedestrians and vehicles can see one another. Keep in mind, our driveway's on Twenty-third Street, it's a dead-end street, so it's, it's very lightly traveled by pedestrians, if at all.
I'm not debating issue of mirrors, but I can tell you that they are not totally safe, from my experience. Will there be any type of mechanical features built in, like a, maybe a, a red stop sign or a green for go to alert the drivers coming and going into those garage areas that there might be pedestrians and/or children passing by there?
Well, there will be a stop sign for exiting the garage.
I'm speaking specifically of mechanicals, electrical.
An electrical stop sign? No, it would, it would just be a...
Well, how about a...
Simplized type of thing.
A red light, green light?
No.
Hmm? I, I have to be honest enough to tell you, in today's age, uh, with all the new development, a lot of these buildings, especially in New York City, have them, where there's some type of sensor on the exterior of the building that alerts the drivers going in or out of the buildings to the fact that there are pedestrians in the walkway of that particular area where cars enter and exit. And it's not, it's not an exorbitant cost to incorporate this into the feature of the building. If you're going to put something like that in the building that has a hundred and eighty proposed units, it just doesn't make sense. You're going cheap at the expense of possibly using the life of a child or, or a grown-up. Uh, I don't think it's much to ask, and I think that you should consider it. I think it would be a wise investment versus the fact of losing someone's life.
Thank you for your comment.
Well, thank you.
Next.
Jody Markie again. Has there been a study of cars exiting and entering the parking garage at the same time?
Yes, so cars...
I'm coming in, you're going out, who goes first? Don't laugh, it's a one-lane street. I'm coming in, I'm coming down Twenty-third Street, making a left into my parking garage, you're coming out of the parking garage trying to make a right, we both don't fit.
The, the, the right of way should go to the person making the left in, but...
How do I move over to let you go?
Right out.
Where does my car go to let you out?
The person exiting the garage would most likely make the right out, while, and the person making the left in would...
Physically impossible, it's a one-lane street. It's a one-lane street.
It's a two-lane street.
It's a one-lane street. If I'm coming down Twenty-third Street trying to enter and you're coming out, we're going to meet nose to nose. There's parking on the left side of the street, there's parking on the right side of the street, there's, what's, what's the...
The driveway is wide enough for two-way.
Not the driveway, the street.
The way...
What is the width of the roadway?
Thirty feet.
Okay, what is the width of the driver's space if there's a car parked on the left and a car parked on the right?
About seventeen, eighteen feet.
What's the width of a standard car?
Six feet.
Okay, how are those cars going to fit together?
Six and six is two.
They're not going to fit. From mirror to mirror, you're telling me, you're going to testify here, mirror to mirror, no contact. Four cars can fit in the width of Twenty-third Street. A car parked on the left, a car exiting, a car entering, and a car parked on the right. Has a study been done for that?
No.
They don't fit, sir, they don't fit.
Ma'am, you asked a question, he answered it.
Okay, I would, then I would just let the board to acknowledge that they don't fit, and further study needs to be done to the width of the street.
Thank you.
Well, I can back up the point that the lady said, Mr. Paragoy, I live on 23rd Street, so I can tell you that there is only one car coming down and one car going up, that's it. I've had instances where I had to call a police officer because a car was coming down and I was coming up, and we just got in a stomach, neither one of us went to the roof. So a cop came and resolved and made the guy back up onto Avenue F. And this is where we're talking, we won't talk about preserving the neighborhood, I mean, it's embarrassing for you, Mr. Paragoy, you're on the oath here, and you didn't even know that it was a one-lane street.
It, it is not a one-lane street.
It is, it's one-way, you know, there's only one way, one car can come by, it's not two, two cars can't come, one lane, one lane, that's it. So how many times have you been down there? Stop asking Maselli to answer a question for you.
It's a dead-end street, it has to be a two-way street, you can go in either direction or-
One car at a time, and I'm just telling you right now, part of the redevelopment plan is to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood. There are vast concerns here. You talk about fifty-six trips and seventy-eight trips in the evening, you're talking about having two-hundred units, because you're gonna have four-hundred and eighty units. Let me tell you something, I've, I've lived in my entire life, the light rail's been there for almost a decade, I've been on a light rail maybe five times in my lifetime. So the majority of people are not gonna use a light rail. I know you're using that as your major basis, oh, the light rail was designed so we can come in there and blow out people's neighborhoods and ruin their lives, is what you're trying to do to me, but it doesn't really work that way, and I'm, I'm hoping that the planning board recognizes that, just because you say, well, the light rail is there, so we're gonna go into this little neighborhood on Avenue F that's very quiet, and we're just gonna go in there and build this fifty-million-dollar project and say, oh, you know, we're just gonna build it here and conform to the rules of the redevelopment plan. But there's people like myself that live there that have issues, the lady has her kids there, we have issues, the mirrors don't work, I have a monthly parking pass where I work in Hoboken, I see the mirrors, there's one on left, there's big giant mirrors, they don't work there, I look at the mirror, a lot of times, I'm, to be honest with you, I almost hit people myself because I glance at the mirror and someone's walking, someone's shouting.
Mr. Wisniewski, do you have a question?
The point I'm asking, Mr. Paragoy, do you think that the mirrors are sufficient enough for people coming and going that it's gonna be safe for people that are walking around the Avenue F?
On 23rd Street, we have no access on Avenue F, it's on 23rd Street.
That's true, but actually, it's absolutely enough. How many studies have you done in Bayonne?
Dozens.
Dozens, when was the most recent one you did?
We're working on the, yeah, the, the mosque on 24th Street.
Oh, stop it, stop it.
That's a low point.
Don't embarrass yourself, Mr. Paragoy.
Hold on a second.
You see my partner here, toss this-
We have a court recorder here, cannot hear when people are shouting, I'd ask you all to be courteous and let the people talk and be heard.
Now, Mr. Paragoy, I do want you to understand you are on the oath, so whatever you say here can be held against you, that's fine. So be careful what you say, because if you lie, we'll find out about it. Would you, would you add more examples of projects that have done down? Because I can continue, I'll be here next week on one.
Scott, hold on, Mr. Wisniewski, please, every witness that comes up here is fully aware of the process, they don't have to be warned or threatened by anybody, so please act and behave in accordance with a civil discussion.
Mr. Paragoy, did you take into consideration the deliveries that people get with FedEx deliveries, Valentine's Day, the holidays, the flowers, the deliveries, where are they gonna park? And, you know, when people are getting the, the retailers, for whatever retail development is gonna be there, there's gonna be delivery trucks coming and going, are they gonna be parked, they're just gonna blow out the neighborhood, where are they gonna park? There's no, there's, there's a named spot for them, did, did you take that into consideration?
Yeah, retail deliveries would not be coming in large trucks, this is small retail, they pull into-
How do you know this, I have big trucks coming now!
Can't finish your sentence.
There's big, would you stop asking Maselli the questions and answer the question to me, not him?
I'm trying, you didn't let me finish my sentence.
You keep asking him to answer the question for you, I'm not asking-
Mr. Wisniewski, I mean, you're, you're just badgering the person here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying not, I'm trying to be as quiet as, I'm trying.
But you're not trying hard enough, sir.
You, Mr. Garrick, you don't understand, I've lived there for fifty years, and my neighborhood's gonna be destroyed when this happens.
I fully understand everything.
My life, this, I'm gonna be forced to move, is what's gonna happen.
That'll be-
Okay, so I'm gonna answer the next question here, okay? What about the visitors, all the visitors that are gonna be coming in, where, the traffic study, did you take into consideration that, you know, there's a hundred and eighty units there, all the visitors are gonna be coming and going, where, where are they gonna park?
First of all, we meet the requirement of redevelopment and sample parking, and in this particular instance, we have a unique ability to park some visitors.
Some, what's some?
We have nine additional-
Nine, come on, you have two-hundred units there, nine visitors?
These are not, these are not multifamily homes, these are smaller apartments, they're not gonna have forty people like-
When you did the traffic study, did you at least venture over there and take a glance at 22nd Street, the traffic act backs up there, 30th Street and 32nd Street? We understand that it's a quiet, peaceful, tranquil neighborhood, and we wanna protect that integrity, that's what we want, that's why we live there, that's why we pay the taxes, the constant growth, and now we have this big giant conglomerate just coming in there, you know, that's one of the things we wanna preserve, but did you take into consideration what's gonna happen to 22nd Street and 30th Street and 32nd Street? Did you look at that, the, the traffic patterns over there?
I looked at the intersection that's gonna be most impacted, more so than any of those, and that's where I live. So that intersection's gonna have the most impact, and it, it works fine, minimal impact. So further away, less and less as traffic disperses. More further questions.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, there's Valder Ruiz, 105, having left, R-U-I-Z. This question is to the board, how many of you people live in that neighborhood? One question.
I don't personally live there, but it's not relevant.
No, to me it is.
It is.
To me it is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, here I go again, being repetitive, Mary Curtis, 23 East 26th Street. Now, you did the traffic study, do you know the occupancy of the, of the building?
No.
Who knows, the occupa, you got square footage.
Is it what?
It's the occupancy, I've been asking it, this is my fourth time.
Yes, ma'am, I think it's the fourth time that he mentioned that the planner will be coming up to answer that question.
Good God!
So if you're patient enough to wait, this is the traffic engineer.
All right, did you take into consideration how many children are gonna be moving into that building that are gonna add to walking to not only Lincoln School, but we also have Beacon School on the other side of Avenue F? So there's two schools, there's not just one, there's two.
The, the player could give us a number of children as well.
But you should've fact, you should've factored that in, your traffic study, not even, you should've factored it in.
Ma'am, it's, it's, it's a traffic study of autos, it's not a traffic-
No, he did pedestrian, he should've factored in the amount of children that would be moving into this building-
You asked a question-
Based on the occupancy and the building level.
Ma'am, he answered the question, he does not know-
You guys, you're just like so dead against everybody's thoughts.
Thank you.
You really are.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Peter Faber, 127 West 12th Street. Um, the, the traffic study was conducted during what times?
Seven to nine in the morning and four-thirty to six-thirty in the evening.
Four-thirty to six-thirty in the evening. All right, um, around two-thirty to three o'clock, that's when kids are getting out of school in the area, parents are going to pick up their kids after kids come in and pick them up. Um, why wasn't this conducted around that time?
We, we wanna see when the road's gonna be the busiest at the same time as the building. The building's gonna be busier in the evening rush hour as opposed to the school time period. So I, I looked at a more worst-case scenario.
Well, it's a hundred and eighty, um, mental units, so I'm sure you're gonna have some children in there, some of them are gonna be attending the schools and stuff like that, so, I mean, it would behoove you guys, I think, to, to at least conduct the traffic study around that time of that area, correct?
No, the results would then be better than what I projected for the, the evening rush hour time period, which is when the road is gonna be busier and our building's gonna be its busiest.
Have you, have you been, I was there too, have you been to Alabama School?
I've, I've been in the area, I haven't been to the school specifically, no.
Well, you conducted your survey from four-thirty on, so I don't think you were there from two-thirty to three-thirty around that time, so.
No, we were there from four-thirty to six-thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
128 H L, 20th Street. In your survey, did you consider a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty units, do you consider deliveries like UPS, US Postal, or DHL? Did you consider making deliveries-
Well, two things, if they're-
To a hundred and eighty units?
Yes, those vehicles are, just like they make deliveries throughout Bayonne, are gonna stop at this building as they would at any other, use any other building in-
Did you consider, and, and the vehicles making the deliveries coming down a one end, a dead-end street?
They more than likely would pull up on Avenue F, would be my suspicion, the delivery vehicles.
They're not gonna be able to pull into the building, that's for sure, or into the building grounds, are they?
They, they typically don't do that, the, the delivery-
So they're most likely on top of all the problems that we have, they, they're gonna help you with traffic, they're gonna have to make U-turns or back into the street. Would you, would you say so?
No, I would think they would just-
Not having a problem with that, are you in there?
They would park on Avenue F and, and walk the packages into the package room and-
Come on, they don't walk down there, if I have property that's, that's close to Package Street, and I'll take you there tomorrow and watch you, watch them back into Package Street, which is a dead-end. They either back in or go in and have to have a hard time making U-turns coming out. That only adds to the traffic to that building, and that's only the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Paragoy. Mr. Maselli, your next expert witness? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, my name's David Javaski, 22nd Mechanic Street. I just want you, the first-
What would you repeat that?
... prefaced us by saying that we're all ignoring the issue of Route 440. The traffic coming off of there is very intense and strong, people use 30th to the Second Street and 22th Street to bypass all that traffic over there, goes through our neighborhood, it presents a danger to safety, to children, to pedestrians, not to mention the traffic problems and apartment problems. Have you considered the traffic coming off of 440 in traffic study?
Yes, I, I counted the, the vehicles that passed through the intersection, I didn't ask them where they were going or if they were cutting through, but I, they're all included in what I counted.
Are you aware of the number of accidents over on 440 when they blocked that off coming from Staten Island to Jersey City on the way to the Harlem Tunnel? That the traffic that stops are because of the accidents, what happens, they go through our neighborhood at high speed? Have you considered that?
No, I, I didn't-
No, you didn't?
Accident on 440.
Okay, wait my point, thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Okay, again, Mr. Paragoy, thank you. Mr. Maselli, your next witness?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, just got to call Mr., our planner, Mr. Pulwicz, just to answer the questions about occupancy and, and, and number of, and number of children projected out of the, not that these things are relevant to whether we comply with this redevelopment plan, but just for informational purposes.
I do. My name is Paul Ricky, R-I-C-C-I.
Mr. Ricky, can you present your qualifications to the board, please?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, I've been licensed since the year 2000. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners since 1999, that's essentially the, the national certification for planners. I have a master's degree in, in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, which I received in, in 1997. I'm currently municipal planner consultant for four communities that I represent on a monthly basis, I represent other towns on a as-later basis.
Mr. Ricky, have you appeared before the Bayonne Planning Board?
I have appeared, Mr. Chairman, in front of this board on, on three or four occasions over the last forty-five years.
We accept Mr. Ricky as an expert witness.
Mr. Ricky, you heard some questions about the projected occupancy of the building, can you give an answer to that question?
I, I can, and we have to understand that I can provide a, a projection and estimate of how many people-
Do you just talk into the microphone, Mr. Ricky, that would be suspicious?
Yes, sir. Uh, as a planner, I can provide a projection of the number of, of, of individuals that would be in the building, and the best source that I'm aware of for Bayonne is a, a study prepared by the Center for Urban Policy Research. Uh, that's the methodology that, that we use as, as planners to provide projections of, of population and schoolchildren. Uh, in this instance, the way that, that methodology works, it, for north, northern New Jersey, it groups apartments from the, the size of zero to, to one-bedroom, which includes the, the studio and the one-bedroom apartments, and then it groups apartments that are two- and three-bedroom units, and the way that this study classifies these units is that, um, for a number of units that are five or greater. So there's nothing that has, there's no information that relates to a hundred and eighty unit building per se, but generally, the, this, I, I don't wanna speculate, but, um, what the methodology does indicate, it says that for the zero-to-one-bedroom apartments create approximately 1.597 persons per unit, and if you times that times the ninety-five studio and one-bedroom apartments, that creates a popular population of a hundred and fifty-one individuals, and the eighty-five two-to-three-bedroom units, um, they generate approximately 1.996, according to this study, uh, persons per unit, which is a hundred and seventy individuals. So, um, based upon the CUPR study, uh, this site would generate a population of approximately three-hundred-and-twenty-one individuals.
Okay.
Any indication how many of those would be children? Um, we've got children, that was submitted as part of the, the environmental impact assessment, was projected approximately eight to nine, uh, schoolchildren. Um, I, I would note that that's based upon, um, the non-TOD projections that are in the CUPR study, um, so, uh, based on the, the CUPR methodology, it was conservative projection, I note that in that same study, um, when, um, they assessed the number of schoolage children in transit-oriented development, um, a total of, of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-three units created forty-seven students for approximate multiplier of point zero-two. So if you applied the, the TOD standard in that CUPR study that I've been referencing, um, the, the low for the number of schoolchildren would be three-point-six, uh, we were projecting approximately nine schoolchildren based upon the standardized methodology, not taking the credit for the, uh, the TOD approximately. By TOD, I mean transit-oriented development.
Mr. Chairman, those are the only questions that I have of our planner, if there are any other questions, the board has, or the public has, would be happy to-
Any of the commissioners have any questions regarding the testimony of your planner? Mr. Russo, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Clarkin?
I do not.
Uh, Mr. Ricky, if you could just take this microphone over here. Are there any, anybody in the audience, just Mr. Franco, come forward.
Peter Franco, 127 West 12th Street. Mr. Garrick, do you serve on the Board of Education, I mean, do you believe that, do you, do you buy nine as the number?
Well, I'm taking it from a person that happens to be an expert in the field, I have no reason to disbelieve the figures that he breaks forward.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that. All right, uh, expert, so you have the number nine, what happens if it gets to ten or twelve or something like that? You're not cutting people off from the apartment, you're right?
No, it's, it's, it's a projection based upon studies that have been performed by the state.
So projections could be wrong.
Correct.
And there's potentially, and I know we haven't talked about it, it's not the forum really, but there's likely going to be an abatement tied to this, which will take money from education, um, you know, and essentially put more burden onto the educational system.
That, that's not relevant to this-
I, I understand, but I just wanna put that, that out there.
And he can't answer, and I can't answer, because it's beyond the purview of this board, I could discuss the taxes or an abatement, so.
I, I totally understand it, I, I just, I look at, you know, and I'm no expert at this-
You have another question?
But yeah, I'm, I'm no expert at this, but I look at, you know, you're saying this is gonna generate three-hundred-and-twenty-one people and only nine schoolchildren, I just, I can't in good faith, you know, take that, you know?
I, I can say this, I'm, I'm a municipal planner as well, I sit before boards on a monthly basis, um, I'm the planner in the state of Linden, which has a tremendous amount of development around the, the train stations occurring. I can tell you on a, on a, on a practical basis that, um, that, I mean, when the city has been surveying developments that are, that are coming on board, that in a transit-oriented development scenario, in a outer wing area that's further removed from New York City, uh, than, than Bayonne, that the projections are actually coming in lower for the schoolchildren when proximate to transit. So, um, in, in terms of schoolchildren generation, development in the form of apartments near transit outside of age-restricted housing is the lowest generation of schoolchildren that we, that we know as, as planners. that we know as planners. If you want to be frank, where the schoolchildren are being created, where most of us live, are in single-family homes, and the studies largely reflect, once you start to have a lot, it's the third bedroom that begins to create the uptick for when the number of schoolchildren dramatically rise.
Are there any third bedrooms planned in this?
My understanding is that there's 95 one-and-two studios, a handful of, let's say there's five, there's five three-bedrooms.
Okay, so there's five three-bedrooms. That could be nine children right there. But, you know, the people really get on the amenities and stuff, and people are coming to this city for the educational system. Families are coming, you know, so I find it hard to believe that they would move to that area and there would only be nine people. You have Beacon Academy there, which is a private school, they could send their kids, or Lincoln Community School, which is another great school. I still, I just don't buy this number, and anybody else that would buy this, like, I don't have much faith in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Franklin, have you seen some other work here in Bayonne? What have you done?
I've just identified out of handful of occasions some various private development projects. The principal portion of my practice is actually as a municipal planner.
So, a lot of the stuff that you're coming up with is based on methodology and projections?
Yes.
Okay, now, you're aware of the presidential election, everyone was projecting, Mr...
(laughter)
You're aware of how wrong they could be, right?
I guess based on that assessment, it's a projection, so there is going to be a deviation. It's the best information that we have to give the board and the public.
The point of making is the projections could be way off. You know, I beg to differ along with Mr. Franco and everyone here, that, you know, you have 180 units, and then you're telling me there's only going to be nine kids, and, you know, you talk about Beacon School, you got Lincoln Community School, you're familiar with the territory, right? We're talking about here.
I mean, I know the general Bayonne, so you must know it, right?
I can't speak to it. Have you ever been on E-SO?
Sean, let me answer the question, okay?
Yeah, I have a personal friend that's lived in the city for ten years. I'm not, I can't say it overseas where you do, sir, but I've been throughout the city and I know it generally.
All right, the point I'm making is that, you know, we got Beacon School, we got Lincoln Community School. I worked at Bayonne High School myself, so, you know, there might be kids that are going to grow up to be older, and eventually there'll be people that buy apartments and maybe sell them, and people come and go. I think the number would be really higher than nine. I think it would be as many as 30 or 40 or 50 kids going to different schools or to Beacon School. So, a lot of people may look at it as a travel destination, whether you want to bring the kid to come to Bayonne High School or Lincoln School.
May I join the answer, sir?
All I can say to you is that this is the type of unit that is being proposed here, it's not a unit that's conducive for Bayonne children. What practically I think happens is a couple's together, these units, they may have a child, and they quickly find out that the space is not large enough to raise a child. Per square foot, and as we heard, the estimate of the actual rental rates were approximately, we'd say $2,000, approximately $2,000. It's a very high per-square-foot cost. So, as, I have two children, as a parent, people quickly find out that they can get a lot more for their money to raise their children in terms of larger spaces, the amenities that typically children, the lot with children, yards, and the like. So, it's a type of space that is, it's not the most conducive for raising children.
I understand what you're saying, but again, the point I'm making is a lot of the stuff that you're coming up with is all based on methodology and projections.
So, that little part is based upon my experience as a municipal planner in dealing with this issue on a regular basis.
I know in my neighborhood, all of us, we all walk together, we met at a certain corner, we all walked up to Bayonne High School, I went to Mount Carmel Grammar School, and that's what we did. And that's what I see a lot of the kids in, and the parents here are very concerned. So, you know, I live in neighborhoods, I probably know it a bit more, like you said.
Well, I'm suggesting is the answer that I'm giving you now is the same answer that I give when I work for my municipal clients, to the county council, to the mayor, to the public, if they ask me my opinion.
Fair enough, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hi. Bear Hamishakowski, 84 Trast Avenue. Are you ready? R-A-J as in Jack, K-R-W-S-K-I hyphen R-A-J-K-O-W-S-K-I. My asthma's really bad today. You gave us a formula for the 180 units, giving us 321 people. Do you have the formula that tells how many of these 321 people have cars, meaning how many cars per unit?
I personally, it's a better question for the traffic engineer. As a planner, I can suggest to you that the concept of transit-oriented development is not to suggest that people aren't going to have cars, but they could have less cars as a whole or as an average. So, I would really feel more comfortable deferring that question to the traffic engineer, because he has more expertise in that area.
Okay, well, it really comes down to residency. If you have 321 people living in these 180 units, how many cars are they going to have? If it's a two-bedroom apartment, you have two roommates, they each have a car. You have a family, mother, father, they've got to get the kids to school. You're going to have more than two cars per unit, so 180 spaces for 180 units just doesn't really seem practical. And I don't live in the neighborhood, but my neighborhood is being encouraged upon right now. I wouldn't want to live in this area knowing full well that all these people are coming in with one car parked in the parking garage and one car parked on the street. Where are they going to park? I can't answer your question. Okay, that's fine, that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question? Yes, sir, come forward.
Good evening, Mike Morris, 123 Avenue Street, Bayonne, New Jersey. I have a question of you, Mr. Garrick. Can you please tell me what these nine projected children will have as far as impact on the Bayonne school system? Being that you're a member of the Board of Education and you've made previous statements at both places, so I figure you're the best person to ask the question, too.
Well, I don't know whether it's relevant to this hearing.
Oh, it absolutely is.
But in spite of that, but in spite of that, I will answer the question.
And I will then give you my comment regarding your answer, so you can understand why I'm asking this question.
Sure. It's common knowledge that the city of Bayonne has an education system that has approximately 10,000 students in there. More or less, it could be 9,850, but it's close to 10,000. Now, if we take nine students, I think the percentage increase to the student body is minimal or de minimis. That being said, it probably costs the city of Bayonne approximately $15,000 per student to educate a child in the city of Bayonne. Now, in any type of business or any type of enterprise, there is a certain elasticity of the workforce being able to absorb a certain amount without an increase in cost. In some cases, you can't. You don't have wall expanders and you don't have extra, but that's basically it. Nine children maximum would increase by, say, $140,000, $135,000 to the city of Bayonne. On the other side of it, you have a tax ratable that the city gets taxes from to help cover the cost. The other side of the coin, part of the funding for a child in a school system comes from the state. Approximately 48%, 47% of the funding, as I mentioned, of the total cost, comes from the state, which is about $6,000 a year from the state of New Jersey. To put it in perspective of how the Bayonne school system is getting its funding from the state of New Jersey, Jersey City, which is an old abbott district, which was categorized as such as being a poor district, they get approximately about $16,000 a year from the state, which means that the city of Bayonne gets almost $10,000 less per student than the city of Bayonne. To put it in perspective, the city of Bayonne gets roughly $54, $55 million a year from the state of New Jersey. We have 10,000 students. The city of Jersey City has 30,000 students, three times as many students as the city of Bayonne, but they get roughly $420 billion a year, which is three times as many students, but they receive eight times as much money. So, when you're asking me a question that I'm very passionate about, the city of Bayonne is not getting its fair share of funding from the state of New Jersey. Hopefully, that answers your question and gives you a little bit more information than you asked for me.
Unfortunately, it doesn't, because you're giving me the monetary aspect. I am questioning the physical impact of nine to 10 projected students.
I would say minimal.
Possibly at Lincoln School or...
I would say minimal impact.
Or School 14.
Minimal impact.
Okay, well, again, then my statement regarding this is this. At a prior planning board meeting regarding the rezoning redevelopment project on 46th Street, you made the statement that there wouldn't be any additional burden on the school system. But yet, at the Board of Education meeting, when you impassionately pleaded for Pat Cebney's job, you said, quote-unquote, that...
Sir, sir, let me stop, let me stop. You're right there.
This is important, no.
Let me stop, no, no.
Well, then you, no.
Sir, I'm running the meeting.
You're running the meeting, but you're not giving me the opportunity as a taxpayer to address something that you said.
It's totally, totally irrelevant to this hearing.
Two different entire answers. Two different answers.
Sir...
It's on tape, it's...
I don't care what you think.
Well, then you're speaking out of two sides of your mouth and not speaking directly and telling the truth. You can have your say. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I would have advised you not to answer the question in the first place.
Because you don't want to purge yourself.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ricky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Maselli, please proceed.
I have to ask a question before he sits down, I'm sorry. May I?
Absolutely.
I wrote this down here. Okay, I was trying to take notes, but my pen went dead. So, as much as I got, you had mentioned the one-and-two-bedroom apartments there, and you gave the figure of 185 and I believe 170. Was I incorrect in that?
You're talking about total population now, correct?
Well...
I had 151 for the zero, zero being studios and one-bedroom. 151 and 170 for the two- and three-bedroom units.
Oh, 150 when I had 170.
151 and 170.
Okay, that's the reason, because they referred to a total of 321, and I got a total of 355, and we didn't even include in the three-bedroom units.
It includes the three-bedroom units within, the projection away is established, is that it creates for two- and three-bedroom apartments 1.996 persons per two- and three-bedroom apartment. And I actually misspoke about the student population, because it only largely increases with methodology for, not for apartments, it's actually for other forms of development, townhouses, single-family homes, and the like, so...
Okay, that leads me to my next question. If you can't answer it, I'm sure you won't. But, you are the planner. Did Parkview or any representative of Parkview ever approach you? Or you can jump in, Mike, if you care to. As to constructing, say, one-family, two-family homes, three-story townhouses, is there anything that might be more conducive to that neighborhood and benefit our neighborhood as opposed to benefiting people out of town who want to make all this money at our expense and take rebates?
I'll answer your question. I was not personally brought in on any early phase of conceptual planning or the like.
Okay, I got you.
Okay. I'm sure that answers your question.
Mr. Maselli's behind you, I'm sure he'll answer it.
Do you have any more questions for him?
No, I have a question for you, if you can answer.
The answer is that before we got a redevelopment plan in place here, this was a district that allowed this type of development, so...
Look, I'll agree with you before you even go. It meets the guideline, yada, yada, we're all on board on that. The problem is that did anybody consider the people who are living there?
Yes.
And how it would really impact them? It is a residential area, and if part of the guidelines on the redevelopment plan state that we want to conform to the residential environment, I might be taking it out of text word. So, therefore, I'll state the question to you. Did anybody ever consider, and even if you wanted this gigantic building, six stories high, did they ever think, let's just make it two stories, put the underground parking and call it a day? So, therefore, it won't impact everybody that lives in the neighborhood?
Our design was sensitive to the neighborhood.
It's not.
A two-story building, honestly, a two-story building financially...
Is not profitable.
Doesn't work.
Right.
So, look, my clients are in the business of real estate, and so they want to make money on their investments.
I got you, but it's...
And so, again, our design was sensitive. We didn't put up a block building. It is an artistically-done, well-thought-out plan that did try and minimize any impact to the neighborhood, and we think we've accomplished that.
I don't think you did that at all, and I'm going to debate you on that, because if you went to, I mean, you couldn't spit and get another drop of space the way you did your plan. I reviewed it. Nice, nice building, but doesn't belong there, but that's not my question. My concern is, and you know my concern with the parking and with the people in the neighborhood, whatever, I would go one more. I asked prior if there were going to be abatements, nobody can answer that.
Well, it's not that we can't answer, I don't know the answer to it, neither do...
All right, I'm going to ask this, and maybe you do know the answer to this. Maybe I'm wrong. When developers come in to build, and the majority of them are out-of-towners, have no connection to Bayonne whatsoever, they come in and everybody gets an abatement.
I don't think that's true.
Well, you can think what you want, I think what I want.
That's your opinion, you're certainly entitled.
And I'm stating my opinion, okay? And I think that's...
You have a point.
Here's my question, yes.
I accept that.
These abatements, and I, okay, I don't know if you can answer that on an abatement question, but I'll throw it out. If you can't, fine. If somebody comes in, and let's say they should normally be taxed $100,000 for whatever development they're making, and they get an abatement, whether it's 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, or whatever, I mean, I want this education, so I'm not being cute, I want you to answer me. Okay, so, if they then have this abatement and it goes over, how much money on an average $100,000 abatement, where they pay how much of a percentage, I would like to know, what is given to them gratis on that, then we, the taxpayers, pick up what they get to not use? Can you explain that to me?
I really can't, ma'am, but I'll tell you this, that I think every month or twice a month, there is a city council meeting.
I'm not everyone.
And at the city council meeting, feel free to ask that question.
Who are you?
Because I'm sure you'll get the answer from the people that actually make decisions regarding abatements.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I don't know the answer, I'm being honest with you. No, I don't know.
Because every time I look at something, because I do go to the council meetings, abatement, abatement, abatement.
Well, then, you should ask that question at the proper venue. This is not it. Thank you.
Mr. Malloy, can you tell me that?
This is not the...
Or anybody?
This is not the venue that the city council...
Hey, I haven't, I've been here a while, but I haven't known who does what or who says what yet.
Well, I'm telling you, anything to do with tax abatement or any tax questions, feel free to bring it up at the...
Thank you.
...city council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Perez, can you tell me?
We can talk about this after the meeting, I really don't see the relevance, Mr. Chairman.
It doesn't, it's not relevant to this hearing.
I do, because if somebody gets a freebie for developing, it comes out of my tax dollars. It's very relevant to me.
Ma'am, you're at the wrong venue for that. Anybody else?
For Paul?
Thank you. Mr. Maselli, would you please conclude? Do you have any other witnesses?
No, Mr. Chairman, that would conclude our presentation. If you'd like to open it...
Yes.
I have a question.
And then I'll close after that.
That's it. At this, right, at this point, you've heard all of the testimony of the applicant...
Please, please, Mr. Garrick, please.
What's that? What was that?
Please, 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 to you specifically, if I may.
Well, you'll be able to make it at the end. At this point, you've heard all of the expert witnesses of Mr. Maselli. At this point, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to make a statement regarding this application, pro or con, please come forward. Yes, Mr. Franco?
Waited a while for this, I'm sorry. Okay. That felt good. Peter Franco, 127 West 12th Street. A lot of the members of the audience had questions, and, Mr. Garrett, like you said, it wasn't the forum. I'm kind of wondering, like, where's the mayor? Because the mayor, to my knowledge, he's a part of the planning board, and, uh, whether honorary or not, he should be at these meetings. I don't know. I haven't been to every single one. I've been to every single council meeting, but I could certainly tell you, um, every meeting that I've attended here, I have not seen the mayor. And it would be nice for the residents to at least get an answer from the mayor, direct, on some of this stuff. But folks, I, I really feel like the politicians just don't care. Um, you know, I hate to break it to you, but I feel like these meetings are just a formality at this point. Everything is pretty much predetermined, and, uh, but, um, I, I do research, and I ran into a couple of things. Um, I, I looked at Mr. Mazzelli's, uh, law firm that he works for. Members of the planning board, are you familiar with the New Jersey election contribution reports? And I'll, okay, I'd like to present you with a few.
Mr. Chairman, I object to this. I object. Mr. Franco, hold on. The relevance, it is wholly irrelevant.
People...
No, to the presentation and material.
Listen.
It's, it's...
Ladies and gentlemen, please, I'm running the meeting, Mr. Franco. This, and I'll ask my counsel, is this relevant to this hearing?
It is not relevant, and we don't accept evidence from the, uh, audience.
Okay.
It's from the New Jersey Election Board. It's not from the audience.
I, I have just received legal counsel regarding your request to turn over information. This is not relevant to this hearing, Mr. Franco. Please conclude your...
All right, well, if you did have, I, I can't give it to you. I can give it to members in the audience though.
Absolutely. Well, later on, if you...
All right, all right, well, if we turn the page to, uh, the first contribution is Paul Reena, the next is Raymond Lesniak, principal of the company Mr. Mazzelli works for, donated to the mayor. I can say that on record, that is fact. Um, I don't have to present anything, but at the very least, this has to be a conflict of interest and deserves to further, uh, be reviewed further by the members of the planning board. I mean, there's stuff on record. All you gotta do is Google, go to CMA Associates, look at the contributions, all that stuff is there. You know, it's no secret, you got guys from London, that's Raymond Lesniak's people. Let's keep it real. You know, this is what's going on. Other politicians from other cities are running this show.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Raymond Lesniak is no longer associate with our firm as...
As of today, as of today, let's flip stop the line.
This is, this, can we both stop it? Okay, so then, if we're gonna both stop, the, the, I, I, I'm telling you that this is irrelevant. I'm telling you that Raymond...
Mr. Mazzelli, you heard my word.
Yes, thank you.
He made this, he's testifying. A pat, stop!
No, no, why don't you stop?
If you want to speak, come to the microphone. Don't yell out. You can pursue, Mr. Franco.
Mr. Franco, conclude your statement, please, so we can get on...
I would appreciate, despite you not being able to see this, to actually look into this. There's an obligation, whether appointed or elected, to the people that things are seen through, you know, fairly and honestly. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on.
I'm sworn in. Oh, my God, am I gonna get in trouble? Mr. Wisniewski, you're testifying at this point. That's why we have this sworn-in. You understand? Thank you.
You're about to be a willing to chief of duty.
Absolutely. That's for all my Polish friends. Mr. Mazzelli, do you know what the term "pay to play" means? There's almost no more questions.
Make a statement to the board regarding this application.
Okay, there's several issues, you know, most particular, but, yeah, as you know, I live on 23rd Street, I've been here several times, and, you know, I, I just find it hard to believe that this, the building is a great, a beautiful building. It just doesn't belong in a quiet residential neighborhood. And anybody on the planning board, I'm hoping that you see that, say, well, listen, you know, all these people here have a valid point, it's quiet, and, 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 and the redevelopment plan that says to protect the integrity of the neighborhood. I don't see how you can build a six-story building with 180 units in it and then have two other buildings, one that's gonna be, uh, six stories, that's gonna have 20 units in it. I don't see how people say, oh, well, even in the media, oh, well, they're not, uh, they're not into redevelopment. We're, we're fine with it. If they brought in houses that may be two or three-family houses that would conform to the entire neighborhood, we wouldn't be discussing this here today. We would be very happy with it. The dense city, it's just, there's too many people. The neighborhood is very, very dense as it is. There's house on top of house on top of the house. If you've been in the area, none of the planning board members live there, but I'm sure you're driven by the area, you know the east side, you know, and, and, Bayonne in general is a very dense area. But, uh, you have to keep it quiet. I mean, you know, the traffic studies, there's not a lot of people, we're saying that, we want to keep it that way. I've lived there my entire life. The parking thing, it's obvious. It's as clear as black or white that this parking thing, it, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be a disaster. I mean, I have problems once in a while, I told you, I live there. I'm coming up my block, the car's coming down. It's a one, it's a one-way. Two cars can't fit there. This is only with just light traffic, as the, I, I agree with you, so the traffic study right now is quiet. When you bring in all these cars, you know, they're trying to take advantage and manipulate everyone to, oh, well, everyone's gonna use the light rail. Most people don't use it. I've never used a light rail. I've lived there my whole life. I use it when it's in snowstorm, I can't get my car out of, out of my parking spot, which is it. Um, you know, then we brought up the environmental issues. We had a gentleman who spoke about phase one, phase two. I'm not an environmental expert, but you would think that you're coming up with a proposal for $50 million, that you would have everything here and say, listen, we got this covered, we did this. So, they didn't do that. They're like, oh, well, once we get approved, then we're gonna go, and they, this should have been, due diligence should have been done for him. They come in here, they aren't prepared. It's as black and white, you have to take, these guys are just not prepared to do all this stuff. And then, you know, to reiterate with Mr. Franco, let's face it, Mazzelli and Charles Arrieta voted Lesniak, they voted all for him. They made a donation to Mayor Davis. Mayor Davis is done, you know, no one's gonna vote for him. He's, you know, next, another year, Davis is gone. All you people are gonna be up here, and Davis is gonna be gone. There's no way he's ever gonna get reelected. The whole town hates him.
Thank you. Anybody else that has a statement?
All I'm saying, please, just take it into consideration. I understand that you want to do redevelopment, but there's a, there's a price at the people that live in the area, and at what point you say, you know what, this is a quiet residential neighborhood, you're trying to build a six-story, 180, this is something that can be built in Manhattan, not on a dead-end block in Bayonne. I mean, it just doesn't fit there. It's like you're trying to take, you have a size eight shoe, and they're trying to fit it into a size six, and you just jam it in there. Well, the law says you can fit this in there. The law says it, the law says it, but at some point, it just doesn't work, just like the OJ Simpson trial. If it doesn't fit, you must acquit. The same thing here. If it doesn't fit, this condominium does not belong in this area, and I'm hoping that everybody here sees it, because everybody I talked to in town, I was in front of Shepard giving out flyers, you're right, it doesn't belong here. You're right, it doesn't belong here. But yet, the planning board, everyone's like, oh, it's a done deal, you're wasting your time, there's three people up on the planning board that don't even look at the paper, they're already voting yes, they're just going to the finale. I want one time for the planning board to say, you know what, maybe we're gonna listen to the residents here and say, you know what, we need to do further investigating, these people have a valid point, this building just doesn't belong here.
Thank you for your opinion. Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Morris, 123 Avenue C, Bayonne, New Jersey. I've lived in this town all my life and seen the major changes. What I see today is that from the burden point section all the way up to 46th Street, seems to be that there are going to be large buildings in each particular area. It's totally uncalled for in certain sections of the city, especially on the east side of Bayonne. It's an old, quaint, historic neighborhood, and should be preserved to some degree. Shouldn't be infringed upon by developers who come in and put large buildings where they don't belong. I think you really need to consider that. And I don't think it's being considered. And again, as I said before, and I'll state it again, I'm not happy with the impact on the school system. I, as a taxpayer, have always believed personally that you pay your teachers, your firemen, and your police fairly through the backbone of your city. I made that statement at the Board of Education meeting previously. Unfortunately, I'm a bit dismayed, because there was a statement made here at the planning board previously, that there would not be any impact, and this is regarding the 46th Street project. Yet, I sat at a Board of Education meeting one evening when there was an impassioned plea made for Patsy McDean's job, and to quote the individual who said, who said it, "She is the only one that can lead us through this influx into the new school system. She is the only one." So I'm a bit dismayed. What is the answer? Can anyone answer it? I realize that I'm making a statement...
Thank you for your comment, sir.
No, but I have to make one other comment.
Sure.
I really do not like the fact that I, as a taxpayer, when I come before a board, this board particularly, that you personally dismiss me when I'm not finished. I'm a taxpayer. I have a right to make that statement. Excuse me, please don't interrupt me. You can have your say when I'm done.
I can have my say whenever I want to say. But if you want to be polite, don't threaten me.
I am, I am, I'm not threatening you. Let's, let's make that very, very, very clear.
Crystal clear.
Exactly, because I have attorneys too. Okay? So let me tell you something. I have a right, as a taxpayer, in the city of Bayonne, to address this board, and I'm doing it in a very reasonable manner. I am upset, I will admit that, but I have not made any unfair statements to you or any, any members of this board, and I don't intend to compromise my own personal integrity here. So I thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you and good evening. Yes, Gary?
Gary LaPelusa, L.A., capital P-E-L-U-S-A. The redevelopment plans come before me as a councilman, and, you know, we read them and everything, and as a councilman, I want development. We all, I think, here in this room, want development. I look at that, and that looks like a really nice project. Um, I have to give you, as far as, uh, the projects go, a lot of people are complaining in town that it's the same cookie cutter. Well, this is not. But the reason why we say yes or no to this on the council level, and then send it off to the planning board, so that these people can get their say. And as far as, Mr. Franco, I just want to correct you. I'm an elected official, who cares? I spent my night here at this meeting when I didn't have to. I am the councilman for Uptown, the third ward. A year and a half ago, I went through this as a member of the planning board also, on that Resnick's project that was mentioned here several times. Most people know I was against that project. I didn't think it fit in the neighborhood. We've never had a building, uh, more than four and a half stories on Broadway, and now we're gonna have one that's 120 feet, 12 stories. 10 stories and 20 feet of mechanicals on Broadway. The reason why it's important that the people have their say at this meeting is because we're talking about design, structure, and neighborhood impact. There's been a lot of testimony today talking about that. They talked about the, the amount of cars that are gonna be here, the pedestrians, they talked about some of the safety issues. There are a lot of other things mentioned here that I, I don't want to have to repeat myself and go through again. And there are very strong issues, people are very, very strong about it. And the thing that I have to say, being a councilman, again, a councilman who cares, an elected official who actually cares about the impact that this is gonna have on a neighborhood. And again, the master plan, even the reexamination, said the same words over and over again, that a, a project should not have a negative impact on a neighborhood. It should not mess with the integrity of the neighborhood. So when you're sitting here, listening to testimony, and there's 60 or 70 people in the audience from that neighborhood, I would think you'd want to listen to them, because they're the ones who live there, and they would know what kind of impact it's gonna have on their neighborhood. I'm not the councilman for down there, but I still care about them. And when I vote on a, a redevelopment plan, it's for the whole town, not just my board. So, doesn't matter whether I like the building or not, the design you did, take a look at the impact and the testimony that all these people came up and talked about. That's my advice to everybody up here. That's what we're all supposed to do. Listen and make a judgment on the impact that this is gonna have. And I don't know anybody who came up here and said, "This is a great project, do it." So I would think if you listen to that, and you listen to the people who live in the neighborhood, and remember, this project is for people who don't live here yet, most of them. We're talking about new people coming in. We shouldn't worry about the people we have here. And as far as elected officials, they're the ones who elected us, so we should listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as I've always done, so help you God. Thank you. Melanie Flora, 108 East 25th Street. I, I wrote down before I came, certain points that I wanted to discuss with the planners and these people associated over here with the building project. And then I thought, I'm gonna just, if I can, just read you something. And I think it kind of pertains to us, take what you want from it, leave the rest. Planning board rejects six-story building near Journal Square. I highlighted a few things. A six-story building, notice the similarity. High-dense residential developments will aggravate parking and infrastructure problems. Councilman Rich Bajiano, I don't know who he is, Jersey City, says even low-rise buildings shouldn't be approved in neighborhoods of one and two-family homes. Goes on, there's a major, and then they talked about another one that was similar, but that was on a major thoroughfare. This area is not on a major thoroughfare. This is a dead-end street. It also went on to say, and if you guys are interested, it's 19 Perrine, P-E-R-R-I-N-E Avenue. He killed it, and they considered it a victory for the neighborhood, and they suggested that the 2,000 and whatever redevelopment plan be revised to restrict developers from constructing dense residential housing in neighborhoods with single-family homes. I rest my case.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment?
Jody Markey, M-A-R-K-E-Y. The beautiful thing about data is that, given enough time, it can be spun in any way to suit the needs of the people who are presenting it. I think we can all agree on that. Um, but let's play with the magical number nine. We have three kindergarten classrooms with between 25 and 30 students in each that feed into two first-grade classrooms. Do the math there. So now you're talking about overcrowded first-grade classrooms, six and seven-year-olds who are learning the foundations, who are in endless upwards of 30 members in a class. I'm also a teacher in Jersey City. I could never teach 30 six-year-olds how to read. Think about that. I taught kindergarten for 12 years. I could never do it. Think about the children in this area, even if it's only one. Think about that child walking out of this building, and nobody really knows if they're going to be safe or not. Think about the children getting to that school. Is there a chair for them? Is there a desk for them? Do they sit there? Right now, they don't. And if there isn't a plan to look into how to fix that, then we need to look further into, can we put more residents on this block? Think about the residents, think about the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to make one more comment. Only one minute. I know I'm not supposed to come up, and I thank you for letting me come back up. I just want to, you know, with Mr. Morris, what he had said, it's true, because everybody here, there's really not one positive person that came from the city to say, "Oh, well, it should be here." You read about it in newspaper, but those people don't live in our neighborhood, and they've called me names. They've even called, there was somebody called me a racist, and this building has nothing to do with racism because they brought it up with the mosque that's coming up in two weeks. And it has nothing to do with it because we're going to be addressing that issue in two weeks, but I don't bring that up now. But the point I'm making is that there's really nobody from the community that's here saying, "Oh, well, this has to be here." Everyone that lives in this neighborhood doesn't want it here. Some people couldn't come. I know a lot of people told me they worked nighttime, they couldn't come, and all that other stuff. So, I mean, there hasn't been one positive statement other than the greedy developers that are here that just want to build. They want to, you know, they just want to go as high as they can, and I understand that. You're a developer, and you can take advantage of the laws, but as Ms. Flora had mentioned also, you want to protect the integrity of the neighborhood. The Planning Board is here to protect the taxpayers and the residents of Bayonne. So as all the residents that live here, we're telling you that we don't want it here. You would think that you'd say, "Hey, you know what? The people don't want it there, so regardless of whatever the law says, we want to protect the infrastructure, we want to protect the integrity of the neighborhood, and we don't feel that this..." If this was being built at the MOT with its big ample space, or even down at the AMP, it would be great because you have all the spots, but you have this little small thing, and it's just trying to jam it in, and it doesn't fit. So if it was something that was reasonable, that fit, we would have no problem with it, but it's just 180 units on all residential units, it's just things that would be a monstrosity. It's just insane, and I just hope that you take that into consideration. There's nobody here today that has come up and said, "This is going to be a positive thing for the neighborhood." Not one person. That's got to mean something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, Mr. Marcello, do you want to?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to close.
Take your place.
Mr. Chairman, what you have here tonight is a proposal to take and run down dilapidated site and turn it into something, and to bet on our city and the future of our city. And someone said, "Regardless of the law." Well, I'm aware. I respect the law. And what the law says, as adopted by this city council, what the law says here is that we can build this building, and that this is right for the neighborhood, and that we comply with all of the requirements of this neighborhood, of this redevelopment plan. So from a legal perspective, we meet all of the guidelines that this city has set before us and asked us to meet. And so this gives you the development that was envisioned when we sent this through the process many months ago. Seeing no variance relief, seeing the benefits associated with a much improved site, I would ask that this board vote to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marcello.
No! Go! Go to New York!
Please. The commissioners have heard all of the testimony from the applicant, Parkview Holdings. They've heard from all of the expert witnesses that were presented tonight, and everybody in the audience had an opportunity to question the expert witnesses about this project. This project comes under the umbrella of the redevelopment plan. It meets all of the criteria of the development plan, and the unusual thing about this application, it has zero variances. There's not one variance that they're asking for in this project. Right now, I will begin polling and asking comments from the commissioners regarding this application and the testimony that you've heard. And I will start at this side of the podium and ask Commissioner Marcello, any comments you have regarding this project?
I do. I have several comments. First of all, I want to thank our citizens for coming out, as contentious as these become, and they do become contentious. No matter what side we're on, we are all citizens of Bayonne, and please, believe me, we are trying to do the best for the entire city. We have to take that into consideration as well. I also would just like to state for the record that I was not appointed to this board by this mayoral group, so I don't have any particular loyalty to any one political faction here. I have a loyalty to our city. That's the second thing. The third thing I would like you pleased to do is consider that this town has evolved for centuries, and every prior group of people and citizens were certainly not pleased with the progress that had taken place. We were originally farmland, then we were a beach resort, and if you really think that those beach resort people wanted to see Standard Oil come in here and bring the opportunity for jobs that were here, you're probably mistaken. So it has developed, and in the 70s, all that heavy industry where we all became blue-collar, breastfeeding, blue-collar people has left. The entire country is changing from an industrial nation to a nation of different types of services. These services, you can see, are in Lower Manhattan, in downtown Jersey City, and of course, in Bayonne. We need to service that as well and to have our town progress to those. So that means potentially bringing in new people here too. Doesn't mean that we have to move out. Doesn't mean that we have to expand our knowledge and our appreciation for new people coming in. Absolutely. But as far as I know, at least I know that from my ancestry, we were brand-new people here at one time. My grandmother came in from Poland and not necessarily welcome at the time. With that said, this is a neighborhood, I understand, it's a quiet neighborhood, it's an underdeveloped neighborhood. The piece of property is basically a junkyard. With that said, I have concerns that it is a dead-end street and that one of the streets are not that wide. However, there is no variance on this. This is a very unusual thing that happens in this town with development. These types of developments dissuade the influx of families with children. It promotes the influx of professional people, people who can spend on contractors, on plumbers, on painters, on some of those crafts that we don't have jobs for in this town. These types of developments offer that opportunity for those people as well as housing for people that work outside and in the city that they're coming back to. So I am in favor of this despite the contentiousness of this project.
Commissioner Perez.
As my colleague says, I have to agree with her. You remember the United States of America manifest destiny, and as we move forward, and this country grew to where it is now, one of the greatest countries. Now, Bayonne manifests, right now, is development, is to bring development, bring radibles here to the city. The taxpayers, especially the senior citizens, cannot be carrying the burden over and over again. We have to bring some radiable. It's a beautiful project. I love the design of it. I understand it's a nice neighborhood, but I've seen this before. It's going to make the neighborhood, believe it or not, it's going to really impact the neighborhood, it's going to become very good. It's going to become, your property value is going to go up. It's going to be a great, great project, and I'm in favor of it also.
Commissioner Malloy, please, please, let everybody talk.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think when you see a project like this, and we've seen other projects like this in town, whether it be Resnick's post-project in North Street, other projects on Avenue E, when light rail came to this community, one of the visions with light rail was that this very thing would be happening. For whatever reason, we've seen it happen in Hope Open, we've seen it in Weehawken, Jersey City. That development has missed Bayonne for a very long period of time. For whatever reason, and I would agree, it'd be great to have a project like this down at the Military Ocean Terminal. It would be great to have many of these other projects down at the Military Ocean Terminal. For whatever reason, developers, at the end of the day, it is developers that really drive the process of ultimately what gets built. There haven't been two-family homes built in this neighborhood on this property, obviously, for an extended period of time. There hasn't been other closed developments coming in on many of these properties that have been slated for development now. So the marketplace drives ultimately what comes to a given town. When you look at Broadway, we all bemoan the fact that stores aren't on Broadway. We all bemoan the fact that stores aren't on Broadway that we want to shop back. Why aren't they on Broadway? Because the market forces that drive what stores go to what locations are currently not driving quality stores to Broadway, and that's a simple fact. And what's needed to propel this town forward are people moving into the community who have disposable income. And disposable income isn't necessarily how much money you have in a bank account, it's how much money you're willing to spend. And the type of people moving these projects, and it's been seen in Jersey City and Hope Open and elsewhere, are people who are earning a good paycheck, and they're choosing to spend that paycheck. Will there be an impact on the schools? To some level, yes. Will there be an impact on children walking to Lincoln School? Perhaps. Would be incumbent upon the city to provide perhaps an extra crossing guard, an extra two crossing guards. It may require redistricting of the school districts in order so that the population of the students can adequately be served by each individual school. I live in a building right now that's 31 units and is producing two school-aged children. I don't think that number's ever fluctuated higher than three, and at points, that number's been zero. So I think the estimate in terms of what this type of project brings in is not a high number of schoolchildren. Ultimately though, and I think this would be good overall for the town, what this project brings in are people who, in their current status, are not looking to necessarily have a family and settle down. These are renters with disposable income. Hopefully, they see Bayonne and they decide this is a place that they want to live in. They decide that they want to raise a family here. They're then going to be moving from projects such as this into the one, two-family units that are located throughout town. And ultimately, that will have an impact on the school system, and that's something that the town will have to deal with. A project like this, and it's all dependent upon the events that they receive, will be producing over a million dollars in tax revenues. A project like this will be producing people who will be spending their income locally, whether it be at restaurants, whether it be because the income levels in the community rise, that attracts different types of retailers coming to town. But the benefits of projects such as this, not just this one project, but projects such as this is what's going to drive Bayonne in the future. I see this as just another important key in the overall development of the town, and I am in support of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Becker.
I think the three commissioners prior to me hit all the points, and although I do empathize with everybody's concerns, I do think that the benefits outweigh the negatives, so I would also be in favor, Mr. Commissioner.
Mr. Quintella. Commissioner Quintella.
I agree with Commissioner Marcello's statement, and I say yes to the project.
Commissioner Lewandowski.
As an engineer myself, I asked all the questions, and I got all the right answers as a design. It's a great design, and I'm going to have to support it.
Thank you. And thank you all of the commissioners for your comments regarding this. I understand nobody likes change. Change is inevitable. As some of the commissioners pointed out, the reasons why developers come into the city of Bayonne is because they look at certain things that are going on in the city of Bayonne. They look at the type of fire department. Do we have a safe city with a police department? And do we have a good education system? And the answer is yes. Do we have areas that are overgrown that are, as was said, almost looking like the wreck of the Hesperus? Yes. And we have to develop these and bring in people, and nobody likes change, but when you bring in people that have, as Commissioner Malloy said, at a different socioeconomic level, that come in and spend and contribute to and participate in and support local restaurants, local beauty shops, local businesses, that is the lifeblood of the city. And when you stop developing and when you stop building blockades at the border and not allowing developers to invest, that's going to be like thunder and lightning to the city. We have to continue development, and I understand the problems and the trepidations that people face when new things come in, but it's the right thing for the city. We grow, we prosper, and we thrive, and the city is going through a renaissance right now. And with that, I would ask for a motion to accept this application. Do I have a motion?
I move.
And on the vote.
Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Lewandowski. Commissioner Quintella. Secretary Marcello votes aye. Chairman Gerlick.
Aye.
Next, a resolution is P-16-039 Suzanne Meery and Joan Brunner, Site 665 Avenue E and City Block 98, Lot 18.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
And second, and on the vote, Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Lewandowski. Commissioner Quintella. Secretary Marcello votes aye. Chairman Gerlick.
Aye.
And finally, P-16-037 Jinko, Inc., Site is 175 West 7th Street and City Block 304, Lot 1.
I'll make a motion.
And I, second, and on the vote, Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Lewandowski. Commissioner Quintella. Secretary Marcello votes aye. Chairman Gerlick.
Aye.
There is nothing else on the agenda.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
And second, and on the vote, Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Lewandowski. Commissioner Quintella. Secretary Marcello votes aye. Chairman Gerlick.
Aye.
There is nothing else on the agenda.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
And second, and on the vote, Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Lewandowski. Commissioner Quintella. Secretary Marcello votes aye. Chairman Gerlick.
Aye. Thank you and good evening.